Ms. McLaughlin, if you'd like to join us at the table, we can get started, please.
Yeah, but it's a needed change.
Because our name was on it, I think that's why.
Yeah, anyway, we'll talk about that. Thank you. So I'm glad you're here, but I'm sorry that.
So ladies and gentlemen, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, and I will hand over the mic to Ms. Evans.
No, actually, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, to Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, great. All right, everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with the afternoon work session that has to do with the boundary. And before I turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg, I just want to kind of bring board members up to speed and the public as well, that the purpose of this is to look at where we might be doing some boundary adjustments and scoping. And the projects that were listed here was Wakefield Forest Elementary for capacity relief, Oakview Elementary and Old Creek Elementary to eliminate their attendance islands, Little Run Elementary for capacity balancing, and then Glenn Forest Elementary School for capacity relief. I do want to make everyone aware that as a meeting manager, I shared with Mr. Plattenberg that the Little Run Elementary capacity balance proposal, there has been some unusual enrollment projections going on both there and also with Old Creek. And so I don't feel that the division is ready at this time to be looking at that particular boundary project. Mr. Plattenberg certainly knows that I've been working on this with him and his department since he arrived here. So I don't want necessarily to be thrown to the very end of the line again, but I do want you all to know that I have requested with his consideration that that particular project, which would have been a little complicated, to be moved off. And I did alert Ms. Strauss, who may want to speak next, about the fact that she's got a very pressing boundary issue. But mostly, what I wanted to also make clear for the audience especially, is that in the effort to be transparent, the facility staff listed off a lot of schools, that they thought there might be a spillover effect to these projects. And so I did want the community to know that as meeting managers, one of the things that Ms. Evans and I had requested is that we be a little more strategic, so that we don't just name off everyone who exists or is somehow interrelated, but actually, we don't foresee them being involved at this time. And so there's, for the community who is listening, hopefully, you'll get a sense by the end of the work session on whether or not you'll have direct involvement, or you just happen to be identified for this initial conversation. So with that, before we turn it over to Mr. Plattenberg, was there something, right away, Ms. Strauss, you wanted to add?
Well, I just wanted to thank Ms. McLaughlin, if you were willing to pull off one of your boundary needs, and that perhaps this will give some space for board willing and Dr. Braybrandt willing, the opportunity for staff to begin to develop a plan for the existing extreme overcrowding at McLean High School. Not that I have a plan, but that it is really staff that needs to have the time to weigh in on that, as we are now overcrowded in the Tysons region. It's not projected to go away, and I know the community is eager for there to be the development of a plan. So thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin.
Absolutely. So, Ms. Schultz, before we get started?
No.
Before we get started?
I know. No, I'm a little flabbergasted. No, Ms. Strauss, you don't get to jump the line, because some other people have very overcrowded schools. And that's going to be part of my conversation today, is I'm not entirely sure how some of the things got developed in the CIP. I've sat down with staff even recently, and including with Ms. McLaughlin. And I've got some schools that have been sitting and are going to be sitting at significant overcrowding. And again, Region 4 and the Springfield District is getting ignored. And I'll wait to talk about this more, but no, no McLean jumping to the front of the line without having a discussion about things like Centerville High School and the problems that we created with the Southwest Boundary Study and significant overcrowding in elementary schools with no place to go in the western end of the county.
Ms. Schultz, I appreciate that, and I certainly think that Ms. Strauss recognizes it from a prior CIP discussion we had. I know, unfortunately, you were not with us when that happened, and so some of this is kind of coming as a surprise to you about how we arrived at what's going to be discussed today. And I certainly would anticipate that Mr. Plattenberg and Dr. Braybrandt will be talking to the board, that with my request to pull one of my projects off the table, that then there will be staff weighing in on how they're going to recommend we utilize the opportunity here. Because I'm going to just also emphasize, Dr. Braybrandt, that for far too long, Mr. Plattenberg's shop has been understaffed. Our boundary attention efforts have been put to the sidelines, and we've got a very, very long backlog of boundary issues that we can't get enough staff in your office soon enough, Mr. Plattenberg, because we can't keep waiting years and years to get to, as you're hearing, the anxiety among board members who are representing their districts saying, you know. So with that.
Can I just say something?
Yes.
Because I'm a little surprised where this opening of this conversation went, because the focus of this was originally brought because there were two areas that were included in the existing CIP to be addressed this spring. And because we adopted the CIP at that time, with those two areas which are listed here, then that was why it was brought. It was, in that context, also knowing that there is a broader discussion about the overall policy and best practices for addressing boundary policy. So what we're doing here is essentially rewriting our CIP on the fly, and that is not something that we should be doing.
No, no, no. Ms. Corbett Sanders, this is not about rewriting. And I know we're trying to stay on time, so I don't want anybody to get more anxious. All that today is, is Mr. Plattenberg, who's the operational expert, has come to us today to say, based on the board's support, there's four different projects listed here that they were going to tackle for the fall. One of them is coming off. That's going to create space for him to be able to share with the board what can they then do with that time, because they're not going to be taking on one of my projects. And that's because I already talked, as a meeting manager, I had extensive conversation with Mr. Plattenberg about the changes that have occurred in my district, and it is, it's not going to be responsible to take that project on this fall.
As a co-meeting manager, I have to say, I'm surprised something's being taken off. What exactly is being taken off, Ms. McLaughlin?
We're taking off the Little Run capacity balance. And I don't know why you're surprised unless you left the meet. Mr. Plattenberg and I talked about the fact that the numbers, Ms. Evans, I know you were focused on your Glenn Forest project, but.
I actually did leave the meeting before you were finished, so.
Well, the bottom line is, you were there, where we talked about that the numbers have changed dramatically, and the staff didn't have something clear.
May I get clarification? Is what's posted what we're doing today?
I just said, I listed off all four. I said one's coming off. So yes, three out of the four projects are still there. It's just one. I said one out of the four, the Little Run. I didn't substitute anything. I noted that it's creating room for some of the other problems that board members have cited as a concern. One of them happened to be McLean Langley. And Ms. Schultz is bringing up she's got issues in hers. The board and Mr. Plattenberg and the superintendent can talk about how to fill in this opportunity, that's all. We're going to first, Mr. Plattenberg, let's go ahead, and board members, all that's happening right now is, in front of you, if you read the documents for today, is there's just, we're going to talk about three out of the four projects. The Little Run isn't going to be talked about today, because it's not going to be tackled for the fall.
I'm going to suggest we let Mr. Plattenberg go ahead and present, and then I'm sure we are going to have a robust discussion.
Well, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to go ahead and, I mean, it's amazing how many people have been here, the principals' support. Having Elaine Toleman, Get the Green cohort partner, and also the director of the Fairfax County Water and Soil District, and also the treasurer, it's really good to see her here, as well as Charles Hokey, the secretary for the Braddock District from FPAK. The principals, really, from all of the schools that are impacted, that are here today. Julia Isa was here, Marie Lemon was here. They had to leave from a prior commitment due to all the stack up on the docket. Wakefield Forest, Sharon Prindle, it's good to see her here with us this evening. And Glenn Forest Principal Cynthia Choud. And it's definitely really, just really good to have you all and your other administrative staffs here, and whoever else I may have forgotten, just in the audience, and being very involved in the discussion we have. Today, we wanted to go ahead, and the reason why we're having this conversation, the reason why we've had the ask for this moment, is when you take a look at what is in the CIP on page 46, it identified a number of projects. Now, we have in the A through H definitions of every school, potential recommendations, which I think is what was being alluded to before in the other conversations. On this page, we identified ones that were the utmost priority, that we were working forwards. And when it says a spring, or when you look at a fall or a spring potential scoping, our requirement is to come before this body, and to get direction on how to proceed forward. And as was mentioned earlier, we take a look at every elementary school within each of the individual pyramids. And some of the obvious things that start to pull out, and in the maps that are provided, that the public will have to be able to preview, you will see all of the schools in the pyramids that we're speaking about today. But you also will see, in a recommendation, the individual schools, and that is where the Little Run conversation comes in, because of the fluctuation of the enrollment, you'll see that one being, well, let's just monitor that. So when we take a look at this, I'm going to go ahead and go through, and a lot of this is for the general public information, because some of the confusion about boundary adjustments and about the definitions, really, hopefully, they'll be addressed, so when folks can actually take a look at where we're about. So the capital improvement timeline, if I could have this thing work. Yeah. Well, can someone just advance this slide if I can't? I'll just do it that way. There you go. Thank you very much. So the capital improvement program timeline, right? As I mentioned, in the FY 2020 to 2024 Capital Improvement Program, the recommended boundary scoping would be initiated for 2019 for the following elementary schools. And that's the reason why we're here. For Wakefield Forest Elementary School for capacity relief, Oakview Elementary School, Old Creek Elementary School for elimination of attendance islands, Little Run was for capacity balance, and Glenn Forest for capacity relief. Those were the specific items that were mentioned on page 46. And on the next slide, we talk about the definitions of our terms for our scoping maps. Is that one working yet? The design capacity. The design capacity is different than the program capacity. The design capacity is based upon the number of students a physical plant or building can support per the original architectural designs of the building. The design capacity remains constant until a school undergoes a renovation or an addition, and then it's adjusted accordingly. But the program capacity is the capacity based upon the number of existing core classrooms, and the specific unique programs assigned to a school that differs from the original design of the building. So if you think about a special program, or a special needs program, or an autism program, or some other program or initiative that is at a school, that impacts the design capacity because of the unique requirements of the physical space. The capacity is recalculated every school year based on program changes. The school year 2018-2019 membership is the official count of active students at a snapshot in time, September 30. Concurrently enrolled students at a second school are counted at their school membership, but not at their current school. The next slide talks further about the definition of terms of temporary classrooms, something this board has mentioned about wanting to reduce. In fact, we have reduced significantly, but we have a long way to go. Temporary buildings that are installed on the grounds of the schools provide additional classroom space. They sit on permanent foundations, but do not have the plumbing utilities and so forth. Temporary classrooms are not included in the calculation of school design nor program capacity. Modular classrooms. Those are prefabricated buildings that are constructed off-site and transported to school grounds to provide additional classroom space. These modulars sit on a permanent foundation. They have plumbing, interior quarters, and bathroom facilities. Modulars are included in the calculation of school design and program capacity, and they're also capitalized, meaning they're bond funded. Definition of terms for our maps, as we go through on the next slide, is free and reduced price meals. This program is required for participation in the federally funded school lunch program under the National School Lunch and Child Nutritions Act. This program provides free or reduced meals to children determined to be eligible under the program, and supports the belief that Fairfax County School Board that every school-aged child should have an adequate lunch. Now, some people will talk about a little bit of a difference or nuance in what they say their forecast is at their individual school versus what our data reflect, and that is articulable. In other words, we can talk to specifically why those points are taken. The next slide for the definition of terms maps, really, is Title I. A federal grant, the purpose of the legislation was to provide all children significant opportunities to receive fair, equitable, high-quality education, and to close the educational achievement gaps. Title I elementary schools with the highest level of poverty receive funds that are used for staff and resources to meet the needs of their students and families. Schools are identified for Title I funds based upon this percentage of student eligible for free or reduced price meals. According to federal policy, poverty rates are calculated for students aged five through 17 residing in each school's boundary area who are eligible to receive free or reduced price meals. That does impact the physical space. So moving on. So on page 46, we mentioned, and taking a look at Wakefield Forest Elementary School capacity relief, and the old Oakview, Old Creek Elementary School, attendance islands, and the Little Run capacity balance. Staff had recommended the adjustment for Wakefield Forest because of the overcrowding that we'll get into in the maps and the numbers that you'll see and what the data reflect. Also, the Oakview and Old Creek Elementary School boundary studies, to be kind, combined as one study, and include the following elementary schools that are listed, and the recommendation from staff to continue to monitor Little Run due to that increased membership projection that we'll see and talk about in the data elements. The schools that were recommended to look at, to be included, were Canterbury Woods, Kings Glen, Kings Park, then I mentioned Little Run, Oakview, Creek, and Wakefield Forest. And map A, we'll talk a little further about that. The Glenn Forest, the next slide, Glenn Forest Capacity Relief. Staff recommended that the boundary study for Glenn Forest include the following elementary schools: the Baileys Upper, Bailey's Elementary School, Glenn Forest, and Parkland. And map B will really illuminate further the data that is the reason why we make those recommendations. The final slide that we have prior to getting into those maps or into this conversation, really, is the consideration and discussion and what we're asking for you. Which schools should be considered for each priority recommended boundary adjustment, and what should be the timeline for each boundary study? Map A, again, is Wakefield Forest and Oakview and Old Creek. And map B is Glenn Forest. So with that, that's our presentation initially. Any further conversation, elaboration of some of the questions and statements that were made, and our ability and capacity, we can address all of that as a part of this follow-on. Thank you.
Mr. Plattenberg, thank you so much. Colleagues, right now, I just have Ms. Hines and Mr. Wilson who indicated they'd wish to speak. So I now see Ms. Strauss, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darren at COFAX. Okay. Ms. Keys, come on. All right, go ahead, Ms. Hines.
Okay, thank you. So I have, and I'm sorry to, I know you want us to roll up our sleeves and get to these questions, right, but I have a step-back kind of question, if that's all right. And I just, I am right now telling my constituents, who bring me concerns about crowding and boundaries, I'm telling them that we're not moving ahead on anything until we have finished our equity-based scoping and comprehensive, you know, discussion about boundaries. And until we start that bigger study, we've kind of frozen everything else. I also, I'm all for the idea of moving ahead, because we have waited way too long in a lot of places. And I'm willing to accept that these are places that are, you know, particularly stuck and really need help. So I'm not against this. I just want to make sure that I'm on the same page with everybody else, and that I'm telling my constituents something that's true. So how does this fit, and I don't know who this is for exactly, but how do these particular high priority, we got to do them now, boundary changes, fit into that bigger picture that we're trying to be consistent and unified about? Can somebody help me?
Well, I can give you initial response. In addition to making change and policy change, the operational effects of the organization still have these pressures, as you alluded to. And they didn't just happen. They've been going over time. We've been monitoring a number of these, and they had been on the, you know, on the lower section, and then they kind of moved up. And it's been more of a fluid or organic kind of conversation. We've identified on the summary pages in prior year CIP, schools that we had, not in the short term, but long term, we had a way-high percentage of overcrowding. And so therefore, it kind of permeated or percolated those schools to the top. Some of the schools, as Ms. McLaughlin had mentioned, and also as Ms. Evans had brought up, have been having issues over time, and were things that we were asked to look at, even, I think, back when we even did the Baileys Upper School, when we actually converted that high-rise. There was concern and talk of the region, and we staved off a lot of that, because we wanted to monitor the growth and development, what was going on. In the case of Little Run, we had years where that elementary school had no growth, and it was a small school. In fact, this body talked about what size is an appropriate size for school at some work session in the past. So that's the reason how some of them came about. And I know Ms. Schultz has been adamant about her region's schools, specifically Centerville High School, and where it's shown as growth. And some of the questions that have come back are, well, why is Centerville not on for an addition or boundary adjustment? Well, it is in the CIP. It is down the road because of our cash flow issue, the higher need issues of additions of justice that we had, and of Madison. We show the decrease in the percentages in terms of their overcrowding because we have identified the funding for the addition. If you look at the end value for the number of students, it shows that if we don't incorporate that addition, we would be way over the percentages we're talking about. So it gives the, a false impression that why aren't we addressing this school when we're addressing these in these other regions, or inequity, if you will. I know it's a long story to explain, that while we go through the redesign and relook at the whole policy, staff's recommendation is there are some things we need to move forward in. Albeit, not a perfect world, this stop in time is more, really, I think, too definitive than the gray area that we need to maneuver through. How we maneuver through it, and again, it is, it is a board's, you know, discussion as to how to move forward. Staff will do whatever you want. But I hope that gives some kind of context of how it's organic, and then systematic with the confines of the funding cap.
Mr. Plattenberg, I just want to add one more thing to what Ms. Hines asked. In the case of map A, the reason why it's time-sensitive is Wakefield Forest is getting ready for its planning, for its renovation, and right now, they're scheduled to be 164% over capacity. And the staff need to know from us, and from the community through the scoping, are you going to just build out a really large mega elementary school? Can the campus and the neighborhood support that? Because anyone who knows it knows there's only one road in, one road out. Or will we have to do a renovation plus a boundary adjustment, but that has to happen now. There's no waiting any further on it. Everyone still stays in the Woodson Pyramid. It's a single feeder into Woodson. And then Old Creek and Oakview, that is simply relieving the attendance boundary. We have kids who are basically going to one elementary school pyramid, and then going over to the next high school for middle and high. It's just cleaning up something that's waited seven years.
Mrs. McLaughlin, thank you very much. But I think we all know that there are things that have waited a long time, right? And I'm willing to take staff's advice, that these are particular things that staff does not want to have to wait on until we have the larger study. But what I don't want, two things I don't really want. One is, I don't want this to be 12 squeaky wheels. That's a mess, right? That's why I thought we were heading into a systemic, systematic, thoughtful, strategic look at boundaries. So my feeling is, you know, after, if you tell us that these things really need to be done, that these are seismic and they can't wait, I can support them, I think, but only if that's it. Do you know what I mean? Only if that's it. We don't do anything else without the comprehensive strategic look at boundaries. Because what I'm worried about is that everybody will say, well, my situation is particularly thorny and particularly important, and I've waited a particularly long time. And my gosh, Hunter Mill is full of those stories, right? So anyway, that's my feeling right now. And I don't want to be a fly in the ointment. If this is, really needs to be done, I'll support it, but only if it's, that's it. So.
All right. Dr. Braybrandt, and then Ms. Hines, you had like a minute 30 left. Did you want to wait? Okay. All right. So, Mr. Wilson, you're on deck. Dr. Braybrandt, you wanted to say something?
Just real quick. This is the province of the board. The board passed the CIP. We showed that page. These things were on that page. The board can stop, move ahead, change direction, but I'm going to continue to be transparent about this boundary process. I do feel, we've done two work sessions. We've been working with the chair leadership to schedule a third in July, what I hope will be the third and final. We brought you the best practice research. We've told you that RREG has had, you know, whatever the number was, 32 factors. We had 16 of the 32 in best practice. We didn't have it prioritized. Mr. Moon gave the historical perspective that boards just could never come. Maybe you won't come to prioritization, and it'll be the existing policy. Maybe you'll define a couple. Once we have that, we're ready to go full force, subject to the limitation simply of the facility staff to do the work. But these are exactly the kind of conversations. I realize, like a lot of other things, there's pinup, there's just pinup pressure, and, and we, I felt strongly, and I still do, that this kind of transparency of these discussions builds trust in the community. Makes sure the community understands what we're doing and why we're doing it around boundaries. It's always a tough, tough issue to talk boundaries as a school board member, and I want you to know it is. It isn't easy either as a superintendent to do it. But the more we build in that discussion now, the easier every one of these decisions that will be made, because we'll have a clear roadmap to work together. And this is my first go-around. This is my first go-around with you all on this. You know, I came in, and there was a boundary thing in front of me, and I said, I need to hit pause. So this is the first step, depending, again, like I said, we have a July work session. I'd love to finalize things in July. This can be part one, and everything else can be done beyond. It's up for the board to decide the timing. But we want to work together with you, unpack it, get clear parameters, and move forward.
Okay. So just to clarify, I guess my, then my response to my constituents, what you're saying, basically, is we had a certain, a few things that we voted on in the pipeline, in the CIP very specifically. So we're going to get those things done, right, because they're already in the pipeline. But after that, it's all part of the comprehensive. Is that true? Everything after?
My intention is, you passed the CIP just a few months ago. We're going to honor what's in that CIP. I'd love to, even before we get too far along, if the boundary policy is completed in July, we can apply that even to this work, right? So if not, it'll apply to all future work moving forward.
All right. Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Strauss, and then Ms. Schultz.
Okay. If I could have, I'm going to, unfortunately, need to ask my questions, and then it's pause and allow the answers, so I can ask the next one. So I think that, I think it'd be helpful for the community, and certainly for me, if we rewind a little bit in terms of the history. I know we voted on the CIP, but just sitting here in the last few minutes, there's the, I guess, recommendation, or maybe it's an actuality, that we're going to, we're going to, we're going to move Little Run Elementary School off, what was included in the CIP, and potentially add something in that relates to McLean High School. So if we could just have a short history of what were the, what was the numbers at Little Run, and how did they change, and why?
Well, historically, Little Run had had, in terms of their enrollment, they had a design capacity and program capacity of around 400, really, students, and their actual number of students was around 340, 335, 340, for time and time and time again.
If you pull out the pre-K, they're about 300, K6.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm sorry. And that's good clarification. Thank you. So when you look at that, and you know, what I just mentioned about their program capacity, you had a school that was close to half of its design. And so that's. And so that's historically how it got there. Now, we showed, you know, keep in mind, in our briefing on the CIP, when we talked about the contraction in the birth-to-k ratio, the number of births versus the number of students who arrived on our doorstep five years later, our percentage of 85% was still the same. But the number of births was that contraction. Well, when we take a look at what's going on at Little Run, we saw an uptick, an anomaly, if you will. So what we do from a demographic standpoint, from a planning standpoint, is we see those trends, and we have to then embed those trends fluidly throughout the years because that's based upon the exponential data that we received on the September 30th numbers. Now, what does that do? The potential exists that it may have been an apparition, a one-shot off. It may have been that that will not continue, that there were people and families that moved into the Little Run community because it's a beautiful bucolic area that have children that they registered, which does happen in a number of our magisterial districts. So that's why for that one year, we saw that, but then we embed that trend, and we monitor for the next year. And because Little Run was so consistently at that low level, it paused us concern, and the magisterial district member was pretty adamant about how can you go ahead and have this? Well, you know, the facts don't lie. How we apply them is subject to the annual review of a five-year projection of the CIP. So, so that's how Little Run. I mean, I hope that helps, Mr. Wilson. And I think you had another question.
It does help, but I guess I, my sense was that maybe the numbers were incorrect, and maybe that was just my misinterpretation of Ms. McLaughlin's opening comments.
Yeah, that, that's incorrect. I mean, the view, the view is a matter of interpretation. And, and frankly, when, when you live in a community, when you represent that community, and you see these numbers constantly, taking out the pre-K, and obviously, you see, you see something different. It is not unusual for me to have a member of this body ask me what the heck is going on, because there's no way. And yet, we, we, everything we do is definable, may not agree with, but we articulate from a demographic standpoint why we make the projections we make.
Mr. Wilson, I'll just provide a little more clarity, because I know we're pressed for time. The bottom line is, it's not just Little Run's projected change, which is quite dramatic, out of nowhere, but Old Creek, which is its kind of sister school across the, across the neighborhood street, is suddenly projected to go way down. So my feeling was, I've got to sit down with staff and understand something before we would ever execute on any notable change on any of these elementary schools. So it's just, it's just not a good time right now to take that on, even though it's been a pressing problem for about six years, so.
Okay, well, that certainly makes sense to me. And, and I think I find myself agreeing with Ms. Hines that if we are in the process of kind of relooking at how we're going to conceive of the process and the factors we're considering in terms of boundary changes, that we shouldn't certainly be precipitous in a case like Little Run, if, if we haven't sort of, you know, if it is sort of potentially a blip in terms of the data, we, you know, that, that would be a mistake. And I, and I guess, for me, I'd also like to hear just a little explanation of us why the elimination of an attendance island also rises to, to sort of the urgency level of doing it prior to completing.
And real quickly, when we take a look in an area, we look at everything in the area. It's one of the board's priorities, it's one of the ones that was listed, and so therefore, oops. Yeah, that's, that's, what I just said is really the, the reason. I mean, when we go into a region, we take a look, as, as I said at the beginning, we take a look at all the elementary schools in there. What are the different issues and concerns that we have? Attendance Islands are one of them, that this board, this body has talked about, of us addressing. Again, that's the reason why we included it.
And, and yes, Mr. Plattenberg, the other thing, Mr. Wilson, is that the reason why this one's getting addressed versus, we have lots of attendance islands and, and boundaries. It's just, in this particular case, we're trying to clean up something that has to do with Wakefield Forest overcrowding. Old Creek is one of the neighboring schools that may be impacted by it. Meanwhile, you've got, within those two elementary schools, kids who start elementary school in one place and then literally cross over Braddock Road to go to the opposite middle and high school. We're just trying to allow these kids to now stop crossing over Braddock Road back and forth, and just single feet up to Robinson or single feet up to Woodson. Because it's, the year in the life for kids of going and changing boundaries back and forth, when there's, this should have been attended to before my time, so it's over eight years running. It was just supposed to be a cleanup. It's not complicated, it's not doing anything that's adverse to the board's priorities of what we want to do with boundaries. We owe it to these communities to stop sitting on something that should have been fixed over eight years ago. It's a small number of kids, they just are slightly over the administrative boundary change that we could have done all on, without anybody consulting.
Right, so I think with regards to that sort of situation, we have an attendance island, I think that that's when you really need to pull the community in and find out what that small community feelings are, and, and weigh that against the importance of, of changing sort of their pyramid and what schools their kid is going to. That would be my own opinion, I don't want-
We're not changing anybody's pyramids. I want to make sure so we don't alarm people.
Well, we are in one aspect of it, right? They're, they're in the same high school, but they're, the base of the pyramid has changed for them, right? So they're in a different elementary school. That's, that's, I think, it is worth, I think, having another conversation about any, all of our boundary changes, particularly-
All of our boundary changes will involve the community. We won't do this without doing, this is a scoping conversation.
Right, and I, and I think that's why I started by saying, I think I agree with Ms. Hines in that we have, you know, a larger policy discussion. And so if we're going to float up one school in particular, I think we have to, we have to be extra cautious, given where we are in that conversation. So, the, the other question I have, and this is, this is different, Mr. Plattenberg, and maybe you can talk about it. Tell me about, other than boundary changes, do we look at the programmatic capacity, changing those to allow for realignment amongst, you know, schools? How do, how do we evaluate that? And can we get data on, I know that the design capacity won't change, but can we get data on program capacity changes over time?
Well, I can tell you, you asked a very good question right there. The first thing I'll mention is that, you know, the staff purpose here is on the Attachment of Regulation 8130.9, it says in the process under Task 1, that a scope of study is presented to the school board for approval. When this governing body, and that's what we're doing. The community process addresses all of those other, the transparent, the going out, the feedback, the input given about what should be included in the scope from the communities. To your point about program, under the stewardship of Ms. Jessica Gillis, the director of my planning staff, she has worked with every region, with the Department of Student Services and the Department of Instructional Services to address and brief any program initiatives or issues that may be coming up each year. We got a long way to go with programs. Because some of the unintended consequences, and I'll just mention Kent Gardens and the French immersion program, a school that didn't have overcrowding, the neighborhoods weren't redeveloped, one car usually for every family member, down one way in and one way out, a thriving program now, a thriving revision of a community that's turning over with multiple cars and, and families that are moving into that area, has made it to be a traffic nightmare, like Glen Forest, like et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, so we have an opportunity there with the program. That's a bigger, larger discussion. But we do take a look at it, but not to the level extent I think you would like, nor would I.
Yeah, I just, it just jumped out to me that we do have schools just on this short list, that I think the public would see that the design capacity is twice the program capacity. And so it, it makes me just, makes sure that we're thinking about, in addition to just moving boundary lines, that we're thinking about maybe doing program, programmatic adjustments that might, might be less dramatic for the, the families that are affected.
Okay, I, Mr. Wilson, you're done? So I have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. Darnett-Cofax.
I very much support the scoping and the look at Wakefield Forest. I think this is a great poster child for, I do look forward to our discussion in July that sort of looks at our policy. And I think with Wakefield Forest, where they are slated for a renovation, and this is scarce capital dollars, and we have an opportunity to also do a boundary decision, which then makes the best use of the dollars that we have. And we can't always simply, in some cases, it is building our way out, but not always. So I think this is a wise path forward, and I understand that there will be community meetings and discussions and all of the rest of that, when we actually get to the details of it. So I very much support and appreciate the maps and figuring out how best to make these decisions before the renovation begins, before the renovation is planned, so that we are right sizing the building. And also, also with Glen Forest, and I was going to go back to Wakefield Forest, the, the overcrowding is tremendous, just tremendous. And if we don't do something, my goodness, that's terrible. And with Glen Forest as, as well, and Glen Forest also has a modular. And I do very much look to Ms. Evans, this is your school, and to give us more insight into what you think the community will support and what is appropriate, because the magisterial board member usually is a little closer to the community, and you're the ones that will have to go to the meetings with the parents and the community and see what they're comfortable with. Because in the end, it is very much of a, of a community deal. So I think both of these, scoping, and then obviously, we get to the, the broader boundary situation, I think that these are reasonable. And it helps us, again, to make the best use of our scarce capital dollars so that we are trying to get rid of trailers, modulators, and right-size our renovations going forward, so. And I do look forward to our July work session, when we will look at some of the bigger issues. But I think it is about making the best use of capital dollars and serving all of the students regardless of where they are, what their needs are. So I think, I look forward to going ahead with these two, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. You have an extra 30 seconds you can use.
That's okay, next person.
All right, so I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Darnett-Cofax, Ms. Keys-Gamaro.
So, one of the main questions that I've asked previously, and I've got, haven't gotten an answer to, is on page 46 of our CIP, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 priorities listed. None benefiting Region 4. There's something about the, eliminating the attendance island for Oakview and Old Creek that doesn't really benefit Region 4. The significant concern I have is, one, I have no idea how those priorities were established. On page 64 of the CIP, the high school utilization, the most four overcrowded, this is what I call the Goldilocks page, you know, too, too much, just right, and, and too small. The four most overcrowded high schools, McLean, Centerville, Falls Church, and Chantilly. With Centerville being the most, at 120%, and the neighboring high school, Chantilly, at 111%. So there's no room to go. That's part of the problem. And yet, down below, in the lower tertiary portion, which is the least utilized, is Justice High School, currently at 110, and in the out-years at 98%. And I'm trying to figure out how we spent, how we authorized in the CIP $14.5 million to expand Justice High School, that's going to be at 98% in five years, when Centerville High School's going to be at 124%, and Chantilly is going to be at 119%. So there's that. Then there is the, that's Region 5. Yellow and orange on high schools is very overcrowded. That looks terrible. The neighboring region, Region 4, is mostly yellow and orange, except for the South County boundary. So there's no place to go in Region 4 and Region 5. So there's no relief provided for Region 4 and Region 5 in terms of boundaries. And this is the page that does not appear. This black spot is, you want to talk about, you know, this is what I heard from my colleagues earlier, that we have to focus on, 1 Fairfax, and I said, the wor, the worst is that which is overlooked, ignored, and left unmentioned. You want to talk about equity-based, particularly stuck and needing help, Ms. Hines, was her, her quote, 40 square miles of Fairfax County without a school. We want to have a talk about urgent pressing equity issues. You have left 40 square miles languishing without a school. No elementary school, no middle school, no high school. And so I don't have a solution in the priority pages, the priority page 46 of the CIP, which addresses the overcrowding of Centerville and Chantilly High School, because there's no outlet provided. There's no relief valve provided.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Schultz, I, I want them to be able to answer what you've spoken to, and then I'm happy to put you on the go-back. Because you, you, you've laid out a lot, so let staff respond to what you've laid out so far.
You guys had another whole work session ahead of me that I didn't get, get a chance to participate in.
I, I know, that's why I'm going to have you on.
I'm, I'm telling you, I don't understand, the other thing I want, I would like answered now is, we never approved as a board stopping the boundary light. We never, we never voted to direct the superintendent to stop providing solutions along the way while some mythical beast is chased in terms of this, you know, super boundary study that is going to be, I don't know what. But we have small things like this that should be de rigueur in continuing the work of the system. So why have, why is everything ground to a halt in terms of the boundary light process, instead of, you know, continuing to do that while waiting for, you know, whatever is that's coming in July, which, who knows what that is?
Okay, so I did hear, Ms. Schultz, you asked one important question that I think Dr. Brabran or our chairman of the board, Ms. Corbett-Sanders, may want to answer, which is, when did the board determine that we wouldn't do boundary light?
I wasn't directed, but I chose to do it because the board passed 1 Fairfax. You can direct me to start it back up, but I'll tell you what. I feel like if you said in 1 Fairfax that you want to put an equity lens on everything you do, there's nothing more important in a community beyond having outstanding services. One of the biggest issues can be boundaries. And I think the board deserves to understand where I'm going to move forward in making recommendations. I want the guidelines. And I think you passed a new policy. This is a big topic in any school district, and I want parameters. If it's do the same old thing, I'll do the same old thing. But I got to tell you this, as much as you all, as much as you all, there's two things. One, Mr. Moon had said, there was, there was a list of factors, and years ago, a board couldn't come up with a consensus on the top priorities. I think that's important for you all to think about. There's so many factors listed in the current policy, you can point to one factor or another. So it's almost like there's always going to, there's even more room for criticism because it's hard to decide how you arrived at the particular boundary decision you did. That's number one. Number two, even the administrative boundaries, that involved a superintendent and one board member. You can say, first of all, I've had, since I've arrived, three at-large board members, I mean, they were already here, but since I arrived, I engaged with them, asking me boundary questions that I can't answer. I don't know why the decision was made, but those at-large members feel they have a role as part of overall representation for the community to understand even those other boundaries. So I just feel like it's time for the discussion, which, it's good, we're having it. And when we have it, I'll use that clarity to move forward. But I do feel, I'm not sure yet whether every board member would raise their hand and say, all the prior boundary decisions made, including administrative boundaries, which never even came to the board, were made with an equity lens. You decide whether you want that lens, or a partial lens, or a full lens, through the prioritization of the factors that we've shared in the best practice research, and based on the parameters you give us, we will move with all deliberate speed. That's the best way I can say it.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, Dr. Brabran. And I understand what you're saying, and I'll, I'll wait for my turn to respond. So, Mr. Plattenberg, was there anything else you wanted to respond to Ms. Schultz's concern in terms of the fact that she's, she, she raised the issue of that when you look at, when your department looks at your most pressing schools on page 64 of the boundaries, McLean, Centerville, Chantilly, in terms of overcrowding? While, yes, Dr. Brabran's correct that, that this board passed the 1 Fairfax lens, your shop is still to be the experts on, how are we using our facilities? How do we prevent overcrowding? Because overcrowding is not safe and isn't an optimal learning for students. So I know that's your lens, which is, how do we address the capacity piece and the space piece? And so where does that fit in in terms of, as you guys- And so where does that fit in in terms of, as you guys brought this forward to us today, the consideration of the other high schools that Ms. Schultz cited that are in the most recently passed CIP?
Well, it's a very good question. When you take a look at, and I really do recognize and appreciate the amount of passion that each member representing the magisterial district has because of the concerns that they hear from their constituents. For the past two years, we have had in Region Four, a listing of looking at all elementary schools in the Robinson and also the Centerville, the magisterial district. So that, that doesn't mean that we have ignored any of the schools in that region. However, when you take a look at what is on some of these pages that talks about what that forecast overcrowding is, Centerville High School has an addition, but it's way down the road. So it's that balance between a high school renovation, which will include an addition because of the capacity, it does have the balance with what we can do to address without as much of the expense. When I mentioned about that cap, it is a delicate balance between all of these factors, how we're going to address them near term and long term. And the challenge with that is that when people mention other schools where I have a capacity deficit and an overcrowding, and it looks like it might be a simple way to just redistrict, well, I don't know that there's any high school redistricting that would work well. When I look at Robinson Secondary, 94%, and Centerville that's overcrowded, I could just say with a magic wand, we should just do that. That affects families, that affects lives, that affects students. That being said, the systemic approach about looking at the elementary schools, the feeder patterns and so on that we're talking about with Wakefield Forest, that we're talking about in these, those to me are much more palatable to continue working through while we operationalize and proceduralize our program and processes. Again, Region Four has been mentioned in the past couple of CIPs of looking at all of the elementary schools because of that same issue that Ms. Schultz is very passionate about, and right.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. All right, Ms. Kofax, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamarra, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
All right, I guess I'm like Ms. Hines and my other colleagues at the beginning of this conversation. I have been telling my constituents that no changes will be made until we conclude a holistic approach and come to some conclusions as a board in totality. I'm seeing heads shake, so I'm feeling like I'm not alone in those thoughts. Yes, we passed the CIP, but I think what I just stated was the consensus thoughts of many board members, that nothing's going to move forward until we finish this conversation. So I, and I do want to, I want to again tell Dr. Braybrand how much I appreciate your choice to know, to not move forward on any boundary light decisions because how we need to look at things through an equity lens and that policy, the way it was written, or, you know, those regs, I guess, not policy, the regs, the way they were written, didn't allow that to happen. So that pause is a hard pause, and we did come to consensus on that. But I think what we're feeling here, this other pause, which we, which many of us thought that we had, is not what's there because, or else we wouldn't be having this discussion today. So I am, if you force me into discussion now, I'm not sure, and I understand how, Mr. Plattenberg, you're talking about the elimination of an attendance island and I get there, like the Wake Forest one, I see the program, capacity utilization. I'm not quite where Ms. Hines was, where she's ready, where she had said that I appreciate what you're saying and so let's move forward on it. I'm not there yet, I will listen to my colleagues as we go forward because I, I guess my question then to staff would be, how much, if we wait until, okay, first of all, when is the conclusion? July, right? The next work session will be in July. What would be the time lag and what would the impact be if we waited until that discussion to move forward on anything since many of us thought that's where we were anyway?
Mr. Plattenberg, did you want to respond to that?
I apologize, I was, I was trying to process about Wakefield Forest because when you take a look at it, one of the things that Ms. McGlocken mentioned is, because we have the renovation and the addition and what is the right size, staff would recommend looking at that school for our 975, which is our standard elementary school. But that's just looking at, I was looking at when the construction would be completed and the reason why the urgency with that is circling around those and their capacity deficit and their projection in the future. So because I have the addition coming up, the renovation coming up, rather, yeah, on this year's bond, that's why I was saying in terms of my design review, the permitting process and the timeline to address it, that's from staff's perspective.
I'm not sure my question was answered, so if we were to wait until July, what would change? For this?
Oh, you mean in terms of the scoping? Well, in the CIP on that page 46 that we mentioned, when we say a spring 19, that's getting into summer. I mean, it's a couple of months, but the timing of when you go to the community, we like to do it before school's out, it is kind of a push so more people can participate, more transparent, and then go again in the fall for the actual boundary. So, you know, I mean, can we do these things? Absolutely, we're at the pleasure of the body, but that's the reason why we generally try to do it in the spring.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. I have Ms. Keys-Gamarra, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Evans.
Okay, I just want to clarify a few things because I think the overall concern, at least that I have, and I think some of my fellow board members, is just really the appearance of fairness and equity and all of that. So, Dr. Braybrand, I will say, I do believe that this board discussed your statement. I know you brought it to us, but the board agreed with it. At least that's my recollection. If I'm wrong, somebody can tell me, but that is my belief. And I know that I have been concerned about some of the little mini changes that happened as soon as I got on the board back in 2017, and then just, it took just a couple of months for somebody to tell me, oh, we didn't think that would happen. And so I'm feeling as though we do need a complete way of evaluating these issues. With respect to the things that are being presented today, I believe you're saying that these were already on page 46 in the CIP, and certainly the numbers for Wake Forest are concerning because they're already at 135%. I can tell you, I've been approached by a number of people across the county, in different parts of the county, feeling that the high schools are much more urgent. I'm not sure I agree with that, but I'm glad we're having this discussion because now I can refer them to the fact that the board has discussed this. And of course, these numbers are unacceptable with respect to Wake Forest. With respect to Glen Forest, it looks like we are currently at 100%. They were already included, as in Ms. Evans already went through the process of putting this into the CIP, and we were looking at a renovation. Are we now saying that we're not doing the renovation, but we're looking more at a boundary change? Or how is that? Okay, I'll let him answer because that, my seconds are going down when you talk to me. So I appreciate it, but I want to make sure that the public understands what we're saying. This was already on page 46. There is, there is a difference, I think, or perhaps equally, equal concern for an elementary school as opposed to a high school. And so people have said to me, how did this get on this list when our numbers are so much more out of whack? I think it's important to respond to Ms. Schultz, who quoted Justice High School, when I think I just heard you say that the numbers you quoted included the work that's being done. It's going to be. So I can tell you, there's a perception in the public that somehow McLean was missed and that their numbers, somehow their numbers were just as urgent, but they were overlooked.
Okay, well, a few things to that, to your point. Glen Forest was not scheduled for renovation, okay? It was on last year's CIP on the lower portion of that, at the time page 46 as well, and then did move up.
What does that mean?
What that means is it went from a recommended feasibility look, like I mentioned about all the schools, elementary schools in Region Four, and we state that boundary feasibility, you know, i.e. this is percolating, something's happening here, we need to be looking at. And then it comes up into the upper level, which is the priority recommended boundary adjustments. And the priority recommended boundary adjustments that this body voted and approved on as a part of the CIP is where we staff, we're taking our marching orders on, about those are the areas that the body, right, wrong, or indifferent, wants us to go ahead and address. And it says in there, when that board approves the CIP, the timeline for the potential scoping. And that's the reason why staff then follows the regulation of having this conversation about the scoping for the schools that are listed in there. Now, I will tell you, to your point, when, what I love about the CIP and the work that we've done, not only internally as staff and the brilliant work that Jessica, Ms. Gillis, and her team has done, and Charles Hooky and the FPAC folks, that teaming has gotten to the point where if you look throughout this document, the CIP talks about how to read the CIP document. When you have A through H in schools in different regions, that says potential boundary adjustment. And you will see, as many members are articulating, a number of their schools, as was stated by Ms. Hines, have issues, but they don't end up on page 46, okay? You mentioned McLean High School. Absolutely. You look at the percentage forecast over, and it's massive. There is no out-year renovation coming for McLean High School. Centerville High School. Centerville High School, big problem. You look at the current year, and I look at the out-years, somebody could say potato potatoes, Jeff, you've got the problem right there. So, so McLean's 126 and Centerville's 124. It's still 124 over. It's not the 160 that we're talking about with Wakefield Forest, but it's still way over. And you're addressing these additions, right, because of the cost of the total bond program and finding out where the push and the pull is to address it. Well, I have an addition, which I will do the renovation for Centerville. But the Centerville parents are saying, what does that give me now? And the answer is, well, it doesn't. We're going to go ahead and put, you know, we put trailers out short-term, which is not desirable, we put modulators out, which is not desirable, but that's how we address the short-term with that long-term view. And when you look at the CIP, it articulates in yellow the schools that are highlighted for construction. It identifies which ones are. Now, on the page for the percentages, as Ms. Schultz has so aptly pointed out, it doesn't mention the justice numbers incorporate the addition. Well, that, it should, absolutely. That's why I love the discussion, because it's mentioned, it permeated throughout in multiple different areas and ways. So, so anyway, I think, I think I covered each of the points you touched on, but I'm not sure that I answered anything.
Yep, all right.
I only have two seconds, so I'll do a go-back.
Do a go-back? Okay. Thank you, thank you. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Evans, Mr. McAvine.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. The timing for Wake Forest, Wakefield Forest is that it's on this year's bond, I believe, and so that's part of the, why this took a priority on this discussion because of the bond. As far as the attendance islands, we haven't really addressed attendance islands as a policy. I think that's part of the overall holistic approach that needs to be taken. And so is there, from a prioritization, if we see this, the Wakefield Forest with their capacity constraints seems to be a high priority, especially since they're little kids, the renovation, but also addressing their boundary. As far as Glen Forest, Glen Forest is not up for renovation, no, but it's at 102%. And so, I'm sorry, you were whispering? I'm sorry.
I was checking with her, I think they have 29 temporary classrooms, yeah.
I will address.
Okay.
She was asking a question. No, I hadn't gotten to temporary classrooms, but thank you for answering it. I don't need to now, okay. So with Glen Forest, you're at 102%, and that's in 2023, you're at 100% now. I'd like to understand a little bit more, what is the pressure of having it done this spring versus waiting until after we get in October, or after we get a discussion on the overall boundaries? And then I'm going to thank people for raising the sheer overcrowding across the county. There's nothing more important in address, in highlighting that to say, we really do need to take a fresh look at what our, our boundary policy is, and we have to put pressure on ourselves to come to a resolution on how to address the boundary policy with an equity lens. And so I would just urge my colleagues that this highlights it quite well, if you go back and look at all of the hot maps. Any answers for me?
I'm sorry, I looked at that as a board conversation about that subject matter. I apologize for stepping up.
No, but actually, in support, yeah, in support of what Ms. Corbett Sanders asked, Mr. Plattenberg, for you or Ms. Evans, somebody needs to answer for her. Is there a reason that Glen Forest has to be put through and approved now versus after the July discussion?
Well, if you want me to take my turn, I was going to address that.
Okay.
The whole issue about clarification, we have not come to a policy decision on attendance islands, am I correct?
We have over 130. I mean, there's, there's a large number of, is there?
Ms. McGlothlin, I have a minute and five seconds. I will defer that to a future go-back possibly as the conversation goes on.
I will make note of that you get an extra minute. And so, Ms. Evans, it's, you're on, you're up now.
Yes, and I want to, first of all, thank staff for all the, the work that they have done on this. I know we've had a lot of conversations, including at the, during the CIP conversation, and I do want to emphasize that we did have a conversation at the board table about the Glen Forest boundary. I raised it and I said I wanted this to get going. I asked Mr. Plattenberg, can we do it like today? We had that conversation and the answer I got was, this is for, is in the CIP for scoping for spring. And so this, this is in the CIP that was voted on by this board. We had the conversation at the board table, so it is not a surprise that we're doing this. And the need, they have over 1,100 students there and they are growing. Cindy, is it more, is it more than 1,100 now?
We're about 11,400.
Okay, right. And so, and I want to point out that that is, as far as the 102, that of course takes into account the large, the two large modulators, large and very old modulators that count into the program capacity. They have, according to staff, 29 classrooms that are outside now, in the modulators and in the trailers. They have 17 in modulators and 12 in trailers. And I believe that is the highest of any school in Fairfax County, including our high schools. We have, we have 27 classrooms outside at Robinson, so they do have a lot, but that's a high school. They, and there, I know there are capacity issues at a lot of our schools, but this, this is a school that has so many classrooms outside now and in a modular that is just ancient. So we also have a situation where we have fewer parking spaces on campus than we have staff. So the staff can't even park at the school where they work, and it's very difficult to park on the street. A lot of the teachers are being ticketed now because they are parking across the street from the school. They're getting, the IAs are getting $50 tickets. That's been a concern. It's a cul-de-sac and we have, I think, 18 or 19 buses going in and out of a cul-de-sac, which has created a safety issue. The parents there are very concerned about safety. There are traffic jams there all the time, both morning and night. So it is a situation where I believe if you take the modulators out and you look at design capacity of the school, I believe we're at about 135. I don't, I couldn't. I don't, I couldn't put my fingers on the figure. Mr. Plattenberg, if you remember that, I would be interested in talking about that. As far as why not wait? We, we do need to have the equity discussion, but as far as getting this done, if this board is going to get this school done, we need to have a community meeting right away. We need to start the process. My hope would be that this board would, oh, I'm sorry, well, I, let me finish my thought.
You can finish, yep.
Well, if we're going to finish this by December 31st, 2019, and not just have to start all over again with a brand-new board, we're going to have to get moving. Now, if we really, if we really don't want to do this, and I'm, it's, it's interesting how many people are wishing for boundary studies. Boundary studies are not the most fun thing I've ever done on this board. But be that as it may, if, if we're going to get this done, we're going to have to get moving. And then I would like a go back.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Okay. I now have Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Palchuk, and then I'll take my quick turn.
Ms. Evans, I'm going to lend you some, some hands, that the, if I'm not mistaken, Glen Forest Elementary School may be the only elementary school, or only school in Fairfax County where there are more students being taught outside regular school building than inside. Couple of years ago, couple of years ago, I had, I had a pleasure of, a pleasure of participating, you know, in an event where a former student top of Glen Forest, now working for ANA, who is Executive Vice, Executive Vice President, is a Japanese, Japanese-American, who studied in Fairfax when his father was at the Japanese Embassy, proudly coming back to old school, his old elementary school, presenting, presenting some gifts, brought his wife to show off his old elementary school, and saw all the trailers and modulars in Fairfax County, supporting the best school district in the entire country with so many trailers and modulars. And I was so embarrassed to be there with the TVs, probably, I hope, they didn't take all those footages broadcast all over Japan. I support what is already in CIP. That's where the bold voting unanimously, I'm going to support those. I have some questions regarding, because we are only doing scoping at this point, I have some questions regarding a Wakefield Forest, a elementary school scoping, where I heard that Little Run is going to be dropped off, is that, just looking, looking at the map, if a Little Run gets dropped off, from consideration to be a part of that scoping, I do not know how we can alleviate Wakefield Forest Elementary Schools overcrowding situations, which way to go without creating, you know, another, you know, split feeder? Because, you know, Wakefield Forest goes into Frost and Woodson, and Kings Park, Kings Glen, they go to Lake Braddock. And, because I see the names of those schools on the chart, okay? Okay, okay, and then, so, if a Little Run doesn't become a part of the scoping, where will the students go? I don't want them to be go across to Mantua, or go to another high school, Anandale High School, whether that's a consideration, I do not know. But having said all that, those are questions, but at the same time, I'm going to support what we have already agreed to do through CIP.
Mr. Moon, I want to clarify something, because I thought Mr. Plattenberg was, so I'll do it instead. Little Run and Old Creek and Canterbury Woods are all going to be considered as part of the Wakefield Forest renovation, boundary, I mean, that, we have to go, we have to scope it and decide, how much can that campus facility hold for a larger building? And then, are any boundary changes going to be needed if you can't build out a school to 900 kids on that plot of land for Wakefield Forest? That could then affect Little Run. Kings Park and Kings Glen were there for the Little Run part of the project, which is, it's a split feeder right now. That's all on hold. So, Kings Park, Kings Glen will only be brought in if we address a split feeder issue, as well as a capacity issue at Little Run, but that's not going to be undertaken at this time.
And Mr. Moon, your point about the other high school split feeds, that's what I love about the scoping process with the community. And our community relations staff, and Kathleen's here in the audience, the work that she does is phenomenal to facilitate a very transparent process where that feedback of what people do not want to have included, which is as important as what they do, is articulated and brought before this body, not only for the initial scoping, but then also when we go back forward with the boundary.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moon, you're done?
My time is over.
Oh, okay. Do you want to go back?
I'll let you know.
Okay. All right, Ms. Palchuk, and then I will take a turn before we go to go backs.
Yes, very briefly, just to summarize where we are, is everything else but this, we are holding off until we do the boundary study. I do hope, and, and I have quite a few schools in the red over capacity, that A, because this is going to be happening, Dr. Braybrand, while we are looking at the new boundary study, that we will be looking at those priorities, whether they be capacity, socioeconomic, demographics, the one Fairfax will still be part of the lens for scoping this project.
What I would say to you is, from a pure policy and regulation standpoint, our policies and regulations haven't changed. There's nothing stopping this board from, in July at the work session, with coming out with more defined parameters that can be part of the final boundary adjustments for these two schools. So, frankly, I think it incentivizes the board's discussion in July to come to closure that would not only help those two schools, help staff finalize the adjustments, not the scoping, but the boundary adjustments, and set up for additional projects as the board would direct me and the staff to do.
Okay, because, you know, personally, there were a few, I came into that, were emergencies like this, like Luther Jackson, and we're now concerned about some of what has happened since then. And as we look at some of my overcapacity and boundary islands, they're, I guess, a semester away, and then we'll look at McLean, you know, I think all of these, I'm happy to support it, as long as we're going through the process simultaneously, I guess is my question.
Yeah, I think the board is, is perfectly capable of, if it so chooses, to have the finalization of the policy and the regulation affect even the work that's being done with these two. Now, if there's not consensus, or it's not reached, the default policies and regs would, would take place around these two particular schools.
Yeah, I support, and I guess I would support us being able, not totally using this as a case study, but a little bit, it will become a case study if we do agree on some changes, and to help us figure out, how does that change our, our scoping process? So, thank you.
All right, before I go to go backs, I'll, I'll quickly take my turn. So, Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you can set the clock for me. So, I think I want first emphasize that in the seven and a half years I've been on the school board, I have watched our board and our school division have a lens of equity already, in the sense that when my district was affected by a Fairfax Villa change, where we were trying to figure out how to relieve the overcrowding at Fairfax High School, you know, they were looking at, where were you going to, you know, who were you going to move out of Fairfax High School, where would you move them into? And so, there was definitely discussions, as a magisterial board member who had Fairfax Villa, where would we send Villa, what would that do? And so, I, I want to kind of, I guess, share with some of my colleagues that I can't speak for your magisterial districts. I can only just tell you, when I was talking with staff, there was always a recognition of trying to make sure that we weren't creating bigger pockets of poverty, or that we weren't going to, you know, not have a sensitivity to that. However, we'll have this discussion in July, but we also know that part of what families value here in Fairfax is your neighborhood schools. And so, that's been part of what we've had a tradition of doing where we can, and we'll have that discussion. But to not do anything now, first of all, Ms. Evans, thank you for reminding everybody, what we're talking about today, Ms. Evans and I spoke to all of you when you voted on the CIP. So, I totally get that they weren't in your district, so we have so much on our plates, and people focus on different things, but these shouldn't be a surprise. We didn't try to jump in and do something that you all wouldn't approve. Your hands all went up for it. It's in the written document. And one of our biggest challenges we have in Fairfax County is we are so large, not just by 1 million populous, but geographically, we are a very large district. And a one-size-fits-all of saying, okay, we're not going to do anything, while we take a really long time, as the board typically does, to be thoughtful about any changes to our, our boundary process. But in the meantime, I'm going to say what I've said before, which is, staff is supposed to help depoliticize this, and I mean small p politics. We have to be making decisions that are in the best interest of all of our children in this county. And in the end, if they bring us the recommendations on a best practice, then we help lead our communities in understanding why that's the case. So, I would hope by July, staff's going to bring us research-based recommendations. We can get behind that, and we can continue to move forward, but you cannot sit there and have a school that's going to be at 164% capacity, ready to get renovated, and everybody's going to sit there and say, well, we're just still not ready for letting the ink dry on what this will be. We, we, and so, I'll respectfully disagree a little bit with Dr. Braybrand on, when he decided he put this on pause, well, there's 12 of us on the board, and I really do think we should have had a, can, are we directing the superintendent to pause, or are we saying there are things like Wakefield Forest that you just can't sit there and lose millions of dollars, as Ms. Strauss even pointed out, by just saying, we can't get to it yet? So, now we'll go to go backs. I have on my list so far, Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Strauss, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and Ms. Evans. So, so. I have you now, after Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Can, can I clarify, were you all just talking about Glen Forest? Okay, so I'm trying to understand what the problem is, because the, the current enrollment is 1089, the design capacity is 1344, the program capacity is 1096, and the building utilization is at 100%. And they have about twice the staffing that I've got at some of my schools. Willow Springs, on, on the contrary, has a design capacity of 1036, has a program capacity of 960, and a building utilization persistently at 105% or, or greater.
Ms. Schultz, I need to just make sure you heard earlier the answers that were provided, Ms. Evans, they have 29 temporary classrooms, more kids are educated outside of the building.
Right, because, that's because we've suppressed, we've chosen to suppress the class size so much that we make tiny little classrooms, and then we spread everybody out into trailers, which is the point that I've been making all along, is that if smaller class sizes are not translating to student achievement, what we're doing is we're artificially suppressing with a low floor the size of classrooms, and it's not translating. We could be investing that into teachers, instead of investing it into moving trailers. Now, let me get on to my question. What, what was the cost of the Rocky Run renovation? The total cost?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Hundred million? Seventy million? One hundred and forty million? Forty-eight and a half million? So, forty-eight and a half million. We spent forty-eight and a half million dollars to renovate a school that we dragged 60% of the student population from outside of its boundary. And guess what the student population is going to be in five years because of the decisions this board has made? 76%. We will have spent $50 million to renovate a school that in five years is only going to be at 76% capacity. That is why I am saying, the things that we are doing, the things that this board is doing and making decisions are poor decisions in terms of directing staff and being involved in the chain of decisions, so that we understand the impact. The Southwest Boundary that closed Clifton has left Centerville perpetually over, overpopulated. Chantilly is perpetually overpopulated. I have Willow Springs perpetually overpopulated. I have most of my other schools at top. I had a school, Fairview Elementary, that had no trailers, that now has trailers, that is overpopulated. And now we're talking about doing a boundary study involving Oak View. I, I mean, it's mind-boggling, you're talking about moving students out of a school that we just moved students into with the Southwest Boundary Study, and we could stabilize this. This is the entire point, is we're talking about spending vast amounts of money to renovate and expand Centerville High School, when the reality is, if you put a elementary school in that was a single feeder to Robinson, and I've got Lake Braddock declining, I mean, it is like a, the, the flight pattern for the out-year population at Lake Braddock, when you include particularly the middle schools, it is tanking. So, we're going to have to do something to shore up Lake, Lake Braddock. So, I've got Chantilly perpetually overcrowded, I have Centerville perpetually overcrowded, I have Willow Springs and other schools where children are going to school and perpetually overcrowded or in trailers. And yet, we tend, we tend to talk about only one or two schools.
Okay, Ms. Schultz, I, I appreciate, I can put you on a go back?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, we have $180 million this renovation cycle, and if we're going to talk one Fairfax, if we're going to talk the lens of equity, then I'm tired of Region Four and the Springfield District and the Clifton community being perpetually left off the lens of equity. And this, we, we've not yet had an explanation how page 46 priorities came to be for this board. I have not heard yet that this board directed staff to create the priorities. It's just that you passed it.
Ms. Schultz, as I understand it, we, we did discuss it with the vote on the CIP, the board put their hands up in the air for it, and as Mr. Plattenberg told you, it's laid out in writing, black and white ink, that this is what we're, we're going to be doing. We've got a calendar and everything.
Right, but did, but any of you participate in the discussion about what those priorities would be on page 46?
Yes, we did.
Or was it, or they were just brought to you?
No. What, we had work sessions on them, and then we voted on our action item at the night of.
Well, what we're doing is we're spending a vast amount of staff time on the least amount of numbers. We're not directing the superintendent to continue down the administrative boundary changes, and we're talking about spending vast amounts of money and bond money and out-years for schools that won't have relief for basically a decade, while other schools are getting relief where it doesn't necessarily look like that's a priority.
I appreciate that, Ms. Schultz. What I understand right now is, this is very limited, it's time-sensitive based on when we need to continue keeping pace with what we've got on the calendar, and July will hopefully get us moving forward on everything else. So, I have on the list, Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Do I, do I get no answers to any of my questions? Is that just the way that this goes now?
Ms. Schultz, that's actually not fair, because actually, we have asked Mr. Plattenberg to answer each time that you've spoken, or Dr. Braybrand spoke as well, so staff, would you like to respond to what Ms. Schultz said?
I don't, no, I don't, no, I do not, I'm sorry, I do not have an understanding of how there are no priorities for relief in the western end of the county, when those are perpetually, and going to be perpetually overcrowded in the out-years.
Mr. Plattenberg, as you've heard the question from Ms. Schultz, she would like to better understand, from your department and the work you're doing, how are you capturing up the, the time-sensitive concern she's outlined?
Absolutely. The statement that was made about the concern, when I mentioned on page 46, a review of all the elementary schools? All elementary schools in that region for Robinson and for Centerville? That's to address those. When I have in there renovation, and historically where we do renovations, we accommodate for the capacity of that school, for Centerville High School. In the out-years that you mentioned, how are you going to address in the out-years? That's how we do it. Would I like to have the flexibility to do it sooner? Absolutely. When we talk about a $242 million need, and we're grateful to get the 180 million, and Mr. Moon and others have talked about trailers and the replacement of trailers?
That's not answering my question. My, my question was, why wait for 10 years for relief, for the completion of the relief, when we could be more innovative and come up with boundary solutions that will relieve the boundary, instead of just wait until we get around to doing the bond and doing the building, and eventually they'll get relief? And then, in the meantime, everybody persists in, in, in overcrowding, why not come up with relief valves that include shifting students to other schools? valves that include shifting students to other schools? And, oh, by the way, create equity along the way so that we're not waiting for the relief to come 10 years down the road?
As I mentioned about the elementary schools, that addresses it directly. The timing on when that's done, however, is the challenge.
Ms. McLaughlin, if I could, I'm sorry. We have a set of rules here about how, and I feel like pretty much everybody is following the three-minute. Everybody gets as many go-backs as they want. I don't think that this is fair.
No, I understand.
Yes, I don't think it's fair that I ask questions and they don't get answered.
I would like a go-back myself.
I agree.
Thank you.
Absolutely. No, I understand. I thought that Mr. Plattenberg was going to provide the answer and then we'd move on, so. All right, so, Ms. Schultz, and I'll put you down and go back that you want to get more information than what you were provided. So, I have, at this point, Mr. Wilson, followed by Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. So, I think one of the points that's sort of buried in what Ms. Schultz was talking about is related to what I would ask as a next step, and that is to provide the board with data regarding program capacity for schools over time. I think I need to be able to see that, because I think this, it is a description of overcrowding that Ms. Schultz has pointed out, maybe due to capacity, right? It's really a capacity analysis, but it's being described as sort of shoehorning kids into the classroom, which in other schools is in fact happening. You know, I can tell you, having been out to Chantilly High School, teachers will say, look, they're sitting at my desk, they're sitting, you know, two to a desk to fit in the classroom. So, we've got, we've got to be, we've got to be able to understand as a board. So, that would be a next step for me. I also think, and this is for you, Dr. Braybrand, that in advance of our July meeting, well in advance, we need to see what you have in mind in terms of a proposed revised policy and regulation reflecting the one Fairfax lens that you have. And I would say, get that to us as soon as possible, because I think that we've got to have that so that we can have a coherent conversation and have thought about it and talks amongst ourselves on that issue.
Jeff, how soon do you think we could get it prior to July? If you don't know off the top, we can talk about it offline. The sooner, I got it, the sooner, the better. I forget whether we picked Ms. Corbett Sanders. It was either the mid-July or there's an evening meeting, there's a work session in July. Ms. Mulberg, do you know from that calendar? As soon as possible to get it in advance of the July work session. Make sure you understand, I would love the board to come away at the end of the July work session with defined parameters, ready to go, and give the green light on the revised policy. When is it?
July 22nd.
July 22nd. Jeff, what would be realistic, or is it, do you want a little more time to go back and find out?
Really, that's a conversation through Cabinet. We'd like to have that further.
Okay. And then, lastly...
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, I did want to mention what you talked about. You know, you mentioned the programs and the schools and so forth that illuminated what Ms. Schultz was saying. And the programs, for example, Willow Springs, when you have over 320 to 340 students that attend that school that are not boundaried there but because the program is there, it's a healthy problem, because it's a desirable place to attend. And the point is that when we list in this CIP, the A through H, and the H includes boundary adjustments, if the body doesn't push those forward, and that's the push and pull, it didn't get up to the priority boundary. Oh, it was there in the next level, and it was also articulated for the elementary schools within that region to be adjusted. Ms. Schultz has made it quite clear about her passion about getting some relief on some of the elementary schools to feed into the patterns of a high school, which is the desired goal of the boundary adjustments that are mentioned, that have been mentioned, but have not gotten to that upper-level priority. And so, you're right, looking at those programs, making sure that we articulate the need and the impact, and through our CIP process, when I present to this body, I talk about Page 46. I specifically talk about the staff work, and that's the opportunity for the confluence of competing interests.
And I would just, thank you very much for that. But I think that when we did discuss and vote on the CIP, we then subsequently had very in-depth discussions about the boundary system and how we evaluate boundaries and what that means under one Fairfax. And really, that was sort of putting the cart before the horse, I think. Those conversations and what we intend in terms of our boundaries was really, should have been how we framed our discussion of the CIP and what ended up on Page 46. But that's not to say that what we did was wrong, because it was consistent with years past. All right, so, the last question I have is regarding the Glen Forest Elementary, and it shows on the data that you've given us, 40, I think 43 additional students. When do they are, that surprises me, but when is that, when do those students, do you project them to arrive? Is it, are they, are they already, you know, going to be in the next class, or are they scheduled to arrive in tens over the next five years or something like that?
Excuse me, Mr. Wilson.
Am I saying the wrong school? No, I meant Wakefield Forest. I'm sorry. The Wakefield Forest increase, because that's a really, that number 164 jumps out. And so, I want to, you know, is that what we're looking at this fall?
No, sir. That's the five-year projection, and that's consistent with the renovation cycle and the process with the bond reference.
So, the 43 additional students are projected to come in evenly over that period?
It's distributed over that timeline. I can get the specifics, but when you take a look at the percentage over the total school, it's already...
Well, it goes, I see, right, so that's 43 students. No, I'm, 143 students. 143.
Correct, but that's over that five-year period.
So, that even more dramatically, I need to understand, you know, where are they coming from, and are they there? Or, you know, is it 164 this fall, or is it, you know, going to be 138 this fall? I mean, that, I think is relevant, although I don't, I don't think it changes my support for action on this, but I just think that would be helpful for the board.
I just want to tell you, Mr. Wilson, in the four years that Sharon Prindle's been principal there, they went from 480 to now almost 680. So, they did 200 kids in four years. Is there anything else that you wanted Mr. Plattenberg to answer for you?
Just that it's a successful local Level 4 that's been very favorable. I mean, that's...
No, that's it.
All right, thank you. Yep, they didn't leave. All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Ms. Strauss followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, where you have an extra minute, and then Mr., Ms. Kiesgahmara.
Okay, just very quick report, Ms. Schultz. Willow Springs, my grandchildren go there and they love the school, so. In terms of, in terms of going forward, since we have a bond on the ballot in the fall, in November, I think it's, I think it's very important that we do our best to have, that's one of the reasons why I very much support the Wakefield Forest, since that's on the bond. I still support going ahead with both of the elementary schools. And I know that on the bond, we also have the additions for the three high schools, which is great, so that when we go to the voters, we can show that we are making the best use of the debt capacity that we are asking for. So, I think all of that is a piece, is important that we move forward. And I am, particularly with the elementary schools, I am a little reluctant to slow it down. A boundary issue takes time, because we have to go to the community, and we have a short window between now and when school is out, and you need, you know, sort of the number that, those of you who have not done this before, you are scheduling community meetings, you've got to give people the opportunity to come back and have various proposals of, you know, what the boundaries are going to look like. And if we lose time and lose this spring, it is possible that these, that the whole thing then gets pushed further back. And then, the implementation of a boundary takes time as well. So, as opposed to an operating budget discussion, which you can implement in the next year, usually, boundaries and scoping and moving forward takes longer than that. So, if something is really important, and particularly if it's on the bond, I really encourage us to go forward, even though this is before our July 20th meeting. So, that's my advocacy.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. So, I now have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Kiesgahmara, I have Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines.
Hi. Actually, there's something that came up that I think people need to understand. The CIP, and the reason we adopt our CIP when we do it, is not because we just figure we do it this way every year, but because our capital improvement plan is integrated into the county's capital improvement plan, and we have a requirement to get it to them by a fixed date. So...
I wasn't suggesting that. I just suggest, I was just stating the fact that we had a detailed discussion about boundary policy, and that would have impacted our conversation. That's all I was saying.
Okay, I appreciate that. It's just, that's what influenced our schedule, and the fact that we are having the broader conversation about boundaries is really because it has been a long time in coming, and it's evident by all of the passion around this table, not only from an overcrowding at individual schools, which is rampant across the county. We cannot build our way out of the trailers that are currently in place. We have to look at this holistically, and that's why we brought the policy discussion to the whole board. But in the context of the policy discussion, it also has, we have to have a conversation about pupil placements, because as someone mentioned, there was something like 30% of a school was pupil-placed. That is something that makes it very difficult for our planners, our facilities planners, to even address. And so, we need to, in concert with our boundary discussion, have that discussion. And then, for the specifics, I was wondering, as far as the scoping for Wakefield Forest, how we chose to limit the schools to the ones that are highlighted, and was there any look at, perhaps looking at, other schools that are also neighboring the Wakefield Forest boundary that would have kids going into a different high school? So, I was just wondering how we chose to do that. And then, my other question is regarding the expectation that when we adjust boundaries, you know, there seems to be an indication in today's world that the boundaries get put in place and they stay there for 30 or 40 years. Well, when I look at the dramatic difference between the last time this, the county looked at boundaries, which was in the, holistically in the 80s, the size of the county is a fraction of what it wa, you know, we are orders of magnitude larger than it was the last time there was this very intentful and thoughtful conversation about boundaries. So, we really need to, as we talk about boundaries, talk about a more structured and standardized approach to when we look at boundaries as well. So, with that, any comments I'd appreciate on the, how we decided on scoping to be limited to the ones that are highlighted, because I noticed that there are some, there's a school with 80% capacity right next to Wakefield Forest. And then, secondly, the pupil placement discussion and the discussion on timing.
So, excellent questions. And really, on Page 2 of 4 of the agenda item, it lists actually all the schools, the percentage and so forth. And one of the things, what we really looked at was what we were talking about, not having split feeders to high schools, and that's where you get your 80% school, which actually has capacity, but then you split-feed, which is not desirable. And then, the other one is schools like Mantua that are overcrowded. So, so really, when we took a look at that, we looked at all of the schools within the pyramid, but then, we take a look at the board priorities, and we take a look at those that have been listed in the CIP, and we kind of weed out those. And that's how we come back with what we recommend, making sure that the community knows that we're transparent and that we looked at everything. And that's also what I love about the scoping process, because if we miss something, or if the community says, we want, not that that would ever happen, we want a split-feed to a high school, then they would go ahead and come back and give us that feedback, and through that process, we would incorporate that in our boundary scoping. But anyway, simply put, that's how staff takes a look at it. It's logical, it's intuitive, it's sequential and linear. And again, it's mentioned on Page 2 of 4 that talks about all the schools. Very good question.
Let me, let me say one, one or two other things here. One, I welcome the discussion around the pupil transfer policy. We have a very, we have a very open policy. We move a lot of kids to other schools, and I don't know that we've put a one Fairfax lens on that work. We've done that for a long, long, long time, and in some cases, with some changes made at the state level that we were a little late in catching, it's accelerated for some of our military families to make those same, same decisions through pupil transfer. You know, things like the split feeders, I just, I feel like I've just got to say, this is part of that help that we need, right? Split feeders overall is not preferable, right? In many ways, it's not, and it's not... But if you decide the prioritization of factors, we have to decide what's most important. And that's what we, when we did the best practice research from the first two meetings, we had, Jessica, please, you know, when I'm off, tell me, we had 16 factors in the reg, or was it 32? Was it 32 factors for prioritization around boundary? 32 factors that we looked at when we looked at boundaries?
We looked at 16.
In our policy, we have 16.
We have nine.
In our current policy, how many factors do we have that we look at when we do boundaries?
Nine.
Just nine? I thought it was a little bit more from the study. Now, it's just not. It used to be 16? And...
16 is the, what we looked at from all the different school districts, and we narrowed it down to 16 factors, nine of which are in our policy.
Right. In our policy, though, we have more than nine factors currently, or is it only nine? Is it only nine? Okay. That's better than I actually had recalled it. You're going to have competing things, and so, the more that we can, and again, if you go back to our last work session, we gave you sort of, we nudged you a little about three of the priorities that we thought were most powerful, and I want to say, again, Jeff, check me, capacity, followed by socioeconomics, followed by, I want to say, transportation.
Transportation.
And geographic proximity. So, those were our three from the last work session. Now, the board can decide. It can be all nine, it can be equal, but that's going to help us guide. And I, and I, let me say a broad thing, too. Part of the tension of this is, what may play best in a magisterial, individual board member's magisterial district may not be the same way that an at-large board member would see it, or frankly, another magisterial district member would see it as it applies that same factor to theirs. That's a tough conversation. I fully admit that it is. But the more that we figure it out, what I want to do is I want to be a partner with you as we do these boundaries, a partner. Give the community clear criteria, say that we're going to partner together. In the end, the board still makes the final decision. But I think that's a more powerful way than what, again, everyone has their lens. My lens is, sometimes, something's happened in one community that many other board members didn't know about, and people take their own view of what the major decision was in how that was determined. And I think the more transparent we are with the criteria upfront, the more we can build trust in the community when we do boundary decisions. We haven't done them in a long time. What's, there is consensus on is there's a great need across the school division to begin to put those in play, and frankly, to reach some of the strategic plan goals. If we're going to wipe out trailers in 10 years, it's probably going to be a mixture between additional support from the Board of Supervisors for CIP and appropriately-done boundary adjustments. And figuring out that mix is what I want to do with you, and I think we can do it. I honestly think we can do it. We're one more meeting away. We've given you a lot of work, and I hope that we can have a successful meeting, as Mr. Wilson said, get it to you in advance, get you to buy in, and we can start to add more schools to this list to work on.
Okay. I have Ms. Kiesgahmara followed by Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines.
I'm happy to go behind you, Dr. Braybrand, because I wanted to talk a little bit about process and how we... process and how we really have been talking to one another tonight. I see the passion, but I also realize that, at least for some of the things that are being brought up, I haven't seen any requests from the magisterial people. I'm not talking about what's on the table right now. So I think that one of the things we have to really look at is how we want to go forward. I am one of the at-large people who had an objection to these matters only being handled in the magisterial district, especially after one Fairfax, because you do need that whole county overview, in my opinion. But I do hope that we can have a policy discussion and I hope that we have a work session set up to do that and, you know, and hopefully we will, we won't go to blows or anything, but it will be a robust discussion. So I'll just weigh my concern about how things have been done in the past and how I've heard about repeatedly unattended consequences that have arisen. So as a next step, I'd like to, Dr. Bray-Bran, you mentioned the military rules had changed. I'd like to see information when we come up on that discussion in July as to how that has impacted us, what those numbers are. I'd also like to anticipate, I don't know that we can, but we've got a census coming up, how might that need, information need to be incorporated? All of these are my next steps. How might those, that information from the census need to be incorporated into this discussion? Do we want to make that a regular part of what we do, et cetera? And I also would like to see recommendations with respect, I know we know how many split feeders we have, but what might staff suggest how we look at that? Because I think, I think there is going to have to be some additional robust discussions. I will just weigh in and say, I do appreciate the three-minute rule because I think that we have to have some way of rotating and hearing different opinions. If the board wants to reconsider that, I think that we need to have that discussion, but until then, I think we need to respect it. And I think that that's what I had for now.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kies-Gamara. I have Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines. I have a go-back and then I have Ms. Schultz and Mr. Wilson, who wanted an additional go-back.
Yes. So I did just want to clarify as far as boundary studies generally, my understanding and my recollection from having gone through a couple of very lengthy and involved boundary studies, we can include program changes as part of our consideration. Is that correct?
Again, it's a community process.
Right.
And the board gets the feedback from the community. If that's a recommendation that the board wants to adopt, absolutely.
I just wanted to clarify that. I believe it was Mr. Wilson that brought it up that, so for example, if one of the ideas that has come forward is what if we encourage more of the, what if we encourage more of the Glen Forest families to participate in the Bailey's Magnet Program? That might be, that wouldn't be, that would be a, well, it wouldn't necessarily be a program change, but it would be something that might draw more families in. And I just wanted to clarify and make sure everybody knows that that is a possibility. We can look at program changes for capacity as part of this study.
Absolutely. That's the beauty of the public process.
Right. And so, so good. I just wanted to confirm that. This is a technical question, but I'm seeing varying free and reduced meal numbers and want to make sure we have the latest and the most accurate. Can you tell me where, not, don't give me the number at this point, but because I have a range of numbers based on whether I'm looking at the dashboard, whether I'm looking at what Kathy Partlow pulled up in September of last year and based on what I'm seeing here, where are we getting our FRM numbers? And what are the most accurate and the most current?
Yeah. Well, each one has a condition. Our numbers are our residing students. That's the most simplistic way to look at it. Not the attending, the residing.
Your numbers are the residing, not attending?
From the facility standpoint.
Oh.
So the community eligibility provision, right?
I didn't know that.
For CEP schools? Yeah.
So if I wanted to get the attending, because the attending is what actually impacts the schools, where would I find that?
In order to look at the schools for a boundary change, we're looking at the residing students because that's the piece that we would be moving, not the students that attend, because we know that we have a large number of transfers to different schools. Also...
I see. That's interesting.
Title one, there are two different ways from what I understand and someone who knows about title one can inform me a little bit more, but there's the FRM, which is the free reduced meals, which is based on the kids who are eligible for reduced-priced meals. Then also, there's the community eligibility provision, the CEP, what Jeff was referring to. And we have 19 schools. Glen Forest is one of them. And that's for families that receive federal assistance and this is based on families that live in the boundary, the residing students.
Oh, okay.
So there's two different calculations that are currently being used in FCPS, from what I understand, to calculate title one or who is, has a higher FRM. So the numbers are different than what we provided in this table. This is the number of students residing in the, in the boundary, the existing boundary. So because we break it down into those student planning areas of which area will be moved out of a boundary for boundary change discussion, we can't really talk about the students that have transferred in from another school. I'm not going to be moving them out or in. We would be looking at the students that reside in the boundary.
Well, that answers my question for today's meeting. That's going to be an important distinction as we go through this because, for example, with Bailey's having the Magnet Program, that changes, that brings students in and that changes the demographic. So we should be aware of that as we move forward. I do agree with those that say we need to have a, we need to look at the equity as a, and I also agree that it was the right thing to do to put the administrative boundary changes on pause until we have that conversation. I think we've, but I do want to step back just a minute and say, we have had some very lengthy, very involved boundary studies and I was involved in two massive ones that with community engagement for over a year and at the same time, we did nonetheless make some, some changes at the board level that were, that were, to my mind, bad changes, even after all of that, you know, and I'm specifically talking about Annandale High School. But that was known to the board, you know? It was brought to the board and the board voted for it anyway. So just having a very lengthy conversation in the community doesn't necessarily result in, to my mind, the best result and...
Can you wrap up, Ms. Evans?
I will wrap up. I have two more points, so I'll have a go-back.
I have Ms. Hines, Mr. Moon, myself for a go-back, and then I have three people listed for one final round of go-backs because that will mean everybody's had, I mean, we're already at two and this would be three for some.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, just following up on equity, you know, I think that's something that we have not been intentional or consistent about and that's why we really, I'm so glad that, it's my understanding and memory that that was very high on our list of what we hope to be a very short list of priorities as we look at the strategic look of it. Because it's just, we're not doing enough and we're not doing it, you know, often enough. And so I think everybody knows that this whole process is just very, very complex. It's physically complex, it's politically complex, it's culturally complex. We have a culture here in Fairfax County where parents expect if I buy my house in this neighborhood and that I'm, my kids are going to go to these schools for the rest of their lives and probably their kids, too, right? We just have this expectation that we have fed over the years and not all districts do it that way, right? But that's the expectation and it's part of what complicates it. So I think that's why I really hope this board will tee up for the next board in January, a plan, right? And approach that we can really get started. So I don't know that we'll be able to finish that conversation in July, but I think hopefully we'll make some significant progress. But because I don't think, knowing us, we'll be able to finish it in July, I do think it's important that we move ahead with these two boundary issues that we did highlight in the CIP. I feel like when we put it in the CIP, we don't exactly make a promise to the community, but we tell them, you know, to expect us to work on these. And so, you know, I'm okay doing that as long as, as I say, we hold ourselves accountable for not doing anything else until we have improved the process strategically.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have Mr. Moon and myself and then three go-backs.
Okay. I have a tangential question, which, you know, you don't have to answer right away, about looking at the information provided for, you know, some of those scores on, for both Wakefield Forest and Glen Forest, I mean, scoping, that I see schools with a less than 100% capacity utilization for 2018 and 19, yet using trailers, some more than others. So that, maybe you can get back to me some other time, why that is so.
Moon, is that a question for our follow-up, for our next steps?
I will just offline conversation with him.
I'm going to take my turn before we do a second round of go-backs. Actually, to Mr. Moon's comment, and this might be Mr. Plattenberg, we could have as a next step response coming from you and Mr., or Dr. Bray-Bran. I think part of the problem, we look at this in terms of program capacity, is we're counting our trailers and temporary classrooms as that's giving you capacity. And actually, well, the modulators. Okay. So when, but for an example, Glen Forest was showing at 100%, but that's because they've got 17 modular classrooms. Take away those 17 classrooms and then what are they at, you know, 135%, which is where we are with Wakefield Forest. So I actually would say as a next step, I would like the board even today to perhaps say at minimum, this to me miscommunicates out to the public and even to the board and for us to be making strategic decisions if the program capacity is including the modular classrooms, even if we at least try to say, this is the physical structure of what it could have. Modular brings it up to that because your cafeteria, your library, your gymnasium, they don't grow just because you add more modulators. And so now we packed 17 onto that campus and that affects their cafeteria time for getting into the lunchroom. Now you have five sessions of lunch and it complicates a lot of things. So the other thing is that, Dr. Bray-Bran, I appreciate you bringing up capacity, socioeconomics and transportation. I have shared this before and I know we'll talk about it in July, but I need to speak up now. I slightly disagree with Ms. Hines about the cultural expectations in this county. When I was a 10-year-old, which was 43 years ago or 42 years ago, when they changed the boundary and our family got pulled out of my feeder for middle and high and elementary and it was for two years and then I got sent back again, that was an unrealistic expectation. People like and connect to their neighborhood communities. And so I just think we, we need to be mindful as we're talking about this July conversation of capacity, socioeconomics and transportation. You're right, we need to tee it up. And Ms. Hines, thank you for saying that we're going to need to try and do what we can to help the other new board, which is going to have so many new members. But obviously, this is going to need to be a really highly engaged community conversation because, Dr. Bray-Bran, you said capacity first, then socioeconomics, then transportation. I think you will find, Dr. Bray-Bran, if you went out and talked to anyone in Braddock District, they would push hard against you to say that you're going to make kids sit on buses longer and pull them out of their neighborhoods because you made socioeconomics the second priority. And I'm just preparing you, that was how you said it. I don't think you necessarily realized those three are really important. How they then get incorporated together is really important, but be very careful on the ranking. And now I see, I've gone through my time, so at this point, I just will say that I appreciate everybody supporting Ms. Evans in my request that we honor the CIP. I do see that Ms. Corbett Sanders needs to say something before I go to the final three people waiting on their go-back. Oh, all right. You wanted me to add you on. All right. So I've got three people who indicated they wanted a second go-back. It is 6:45, so I would just ask for the final four people to be as quick as you can. So this is, I've got Ms. Schultz, Mr. Wilson and Ms. Evans.
Look, I don't know how more clear to make this. We're getting two, maybe three minutes apiece, I mean, two to three times a piece, three minutes. The problem is not the three minutes, it's that we cannot have a conversation with staff. We get to talk for three minutes and then whether or not they answer our question is left up to them and then maybe if ordained to get a go-back. That's the problem. That is an ineffective way for us to handle one of the most important, every single child goes to school in a facility. Every single person goes to work in a facility. This is the crux of what we do. Other than educating them, where they go to school and how they get there is singularly the most important. And to have, say, well, you've got nine minutes or six minutes to talk about it and then that's it and it's not a conversation is a problem. The failure here is in staff to bring alternatives. There are no alternatives other than you either wait for years to get on the bond and eventually get the money and eventually get the building. And in the meantime, you're going to sit in perpetuity in an overcrowded situation and oh, well, and on top of it, we're going to waste capital resources to move more trailers to more buildings. It's a mind-boggling thought that we don't have any innovation here. And the thought that, you know, in one corridor, I have Lake Braddock, which is declining, I have Robinson, which is relatively static, and I have Chantilly and Centerville, which are, you know, busting at the seams. And that the answer is, well, let's just go spend 150 million or whatever it's going to be and make Centerville bigger in 10 years and then we'll have the relief. That's not innovation. That's why Boundary Light was created, Dr. Bray-Bran. And I know that was created when you weren't here, but it was created to provide relief because we can't predict where people are going to move. We can't, we have no control over the Board of Supervisors in-building and in-building and in-building and mowing down, you know, tracks of trees left and right to squeeze more people in. And so when we run out of space for students and we shove them into trailers and then the talk is, on one of our smallest footprint campuses, in a whole bunch of years when we get the money on a, on a bond, we're going to jam a bunch more students. We're supersizing schools instead of looking at, how do you, how do you handle capacity with where you can't, where you could deal with it better? And I'm profoundly disappointed that we have not led a discussion around class size, minor boundary changes, program offerings and placements. We know that works. We know that placing the right programs in the right places works and then looking at small minor boundary adjustments works. And instead, we're going to leave certain communities in turmoil or without a school. And Ms. Kies-Gamara, I hate to tell you, I don't even know how, what the number would be for Mr. Plattenberg to tell you how many times I've asked him to bring this solution to the board and it never comes. For seven years, I've been asking for this solution to be brought to the board before we ever had the conversation about what, what one Fairfax or equity looked like. It is not equitable for 40 square miles of Fairfax County to not have a school and for that region to have some of the most persistent, long transportation rides in the county. It isn't fair.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Schultz, I appreciate you bringing that up and I would recommend meeting with staff before the July conversation.
Well, you could meet with Dr. Bray-Bran then just to make sure the July work session incorporates the things that you just noted now that are equally important for the conversation. All right. At this point, I have Mr. Wilson, Ms. Evans and Ms. Corbett Sanders and then we will...
and then we will go to next steps. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Darren Kofax, then actually, you get to go, because you...
No, I'm okay.
Okay. So, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. So, I just want to weigh in a little bit on the sort of side conversation regarding the time limits. Because I do think that the implementation of the three-minute limit has caused many members of this board to feel like they're getting shut down in terms of their ability to talk about the issues and represent their district. So I think this board needs to circle back and have a conversation about that. It's obviously not reducing the overall time of our meetings. We're several hours late already, but we are, I think there's added frustration because of that rule. I also would like to ask Mr. Plattenberg to just, Mrs. Schultz has brought up this issue about, I think she's referring to Clifton Elementary School. That was a decision we made before I came on the board. My understanding is the building is still there, owned by the county, not, a facility that's not in use. Can you just talk to the community about how that decision was made, and the impact of that community, and whether or not it's possible to bring that school, and bring it back online?
Well, to the history that's gone on, I would refer that to somebody else, because it was prior to my time coming here as well. That being said, the facility was abandoned, the well that supported the mechanical system was abandoned. I believe that it would have been important, much like much of the work with the TURF Task Force, with many of the things, that there would have been an execution plan for next steps. There hadn't been, okay? In looking at past CIPs, we've gave reference that something must be done about Clifton. And it's sitting there, right? And as I mentioned as well, in regard to all of the elementary schools in this region, it's mentioned to look at them. When we have A through H, those are recommendations from staff. Whether or not the board will vote and approve that one of those, or another, or all, come to the top and become the work of staff, is a board matter. So when I look at that, I look at that work as more of a directive of a collective body, not individual magisterial members, but a collective body. Again, with Clifton and that region, as I've mentioned about Ms. Schultz, have complimented her, we've brought forward the A through Hs on all of the schools in that region that need to be looked at. But she has been adamant and persistent about Clifton Elementary School, about repurposing that school. My only fear from a facilities perspective is that when a building has been left, and I'll call it abandoned, where I have to maintain it, where the mechanical systems hadn't worked for years, and it hadn't been used for instructional purposes, it's gonna be a challenge for me to go back in and refurbish. I would have to take a look at whether or not it would be appropriate to do a tear-down and rebuild, if that were the desire of this body. So I'd like to do a facilities analysis of it. We've done some initial ones in conversations. But that would be, I would requestfully submit that the direction of this body would be to request whether or not that would be something that we would undertake.
Thank you for that. I would request that as a next step, we at least do the facilities a preliminary analysis. If it's abandoned, have somebody go out there, walk it, who understands structural integrity, and see what's there, what could potentially be reused, whether it's a demo down, all the way down to nothing, and rebuild. That's an important topic. I mean, I think it is a matter that, not only is it just important to Clifton, it's important to the county to have a school facility that's sitting empty. Just, so that's, I would request that as a next step, for the board to have information on that. And one last thing. Dr. Brabran, you were asking about the number of criteria. Actually, the policy 8130 does have a laundry list that is longer than nine in it. I think that it's the paragraph of implementing considerations, and there's a long, long list that includes 13, 14, 15 items, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. All right, before I go to Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Darren Kofax, and Ms. Evans, I just want to remind everybody that I know this is a difficult conversation, and there definitely seem to be a lot of people taken by surprise about these projects and how we arrived at them. And it's, I've allowed a lot of latitude, but in the end, technically, we called a public meeting as part of our work session to talk about these proposals. And I apologize to my colleagues for those of you who, I probably was a little too liberal in allowing the broader conversations, but we really do need to conclude in focusing on whether people are green-lighting this, and then certainly in the next steps, we can help Dr. Brabran be prepared for what will certainly be a very intense July work session.
Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions. I do also want to reaffirm that I fully support the three-minute rule, because what it does do is actually create an opportunity for everybody around the table to have their voice heard, and does allow for multiple opportunities for go-backs. And so, I think that it is a fairer way of doing that. As far as my, the reason I asked for the go-back was because for several years now, both Ms. Evans and I have requested as part of the CIP to actually include information on what the actual capacity of a building would be if you discounted the modulators, because the modulators, in many cases, are quite old. And so, this isn't a new request, this is a longstanding request. And I would hope that when we get charts like this in the future, we have the capacity showing without the modulators. My last question really is, and it goes back to the scoping and the implementation. As far as scoping, certainly would like to better understand how we chose different areas versus others. But then the last piece of it is that, is there a confirmation or a commitment that if we are to do this scoping so that we can, and I understand the linkage to the bond, which is why I thought it was important to get this on today's work session for Wakefield Forest, the intent then is to remove all of the trailers that are sitting out there, and we will get rid of them, and we are not putting them someplace else, so that we... Well, but that's part of the problem, is we have to have a mindset that before we put trailers into places, we should consider boundary changes. Yeah.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Oh.
All right, so to your question, Ms. Sanders, you asked about taking a little modulators. We've done that in the past, so we can provide that certainly, the modular impact. We've had that conversation about them being capitalized and so forth. Upon request, we've done it in the past, so that's very easily done. The second statement that you made when you started talking about, I'm sorry.
I appreciate that, but I think we just have to have the mindset that systematically, every time we do this, we have to show what the impact those modulators are, have on the building capacity. Because everybody gets very comfortable with the capacity based on those modulators. And when you look at the quality of life in a modular versus in, especially an older modular, versus a bricks and mortar, there's substantial differences.
Again, that was recommended as a next step for the CIP when we finish that, so we plan on incorporating it.
Okay, thank you.
And the other question, I'm sorry, what was the second one?
A commitment that we are getting rid of these trailers if we're doing this. They're not gonna be left, because there's a pensions by some building administrators to go ahead and use them as, oh, well, they're there, don't take them away, and we'll keep you.
Yes, ma'am, excellent point. We're all in this together. The direction from the board has been quite clear, from my staff and from myself. Our capacity architects are quite clear. We need the support of the regional assistant superintendents, and the cabinet, and the chiefs are all on board with this. So as far as where we go, if we do have a need for a trailer, it will truly be a need for a trailer that we believe needs to be approached. Since I've been here, we've reduced trailers over 200-fold of them, which I think is considerable process and progress. We've got a long way to go, but yeah, we're focused strategically on that.
Okay, thank you. So I have final words by Ms. Evans, because Ms. Darren Kofax decided to yield her time.
So, I too agree about the three-minute rule. It's, you know, we still have lengthy conversation, and this spreads out the conversation a little bit more than that. I did want to make the point about Glen Forest, with its enrollment, this is a school that has one of the highest mobility rates in Fairfax County as well. So that is one of the challenges in assessing how many students are there at any given time, because we, it has something like 30% mobility, so it changes rapidly. One of the reasons to do this today is because we need to have a community meeting with the full community before school is out, so we're on a tight timeframe. If we wait until the fall, then we simply won't get this done. As far, and I was gonna, I agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders' points about showing the program capacity without modulators in the CIP. As far as where we are and why we're doing these two, again, it was in the CIP, and anyone can bring an amendment to the CIP. That is the appropriate place for people who want to have their boundaries prioritized. And so, as far, at Clifton, that is way beyond the scope of what we're talking about here today. We're talking about two boundary studies, two specific, and we're trying to get the scope on it. I voted against closing Clifton. I ardently was opposed to closing Clifton. But, that is another issue for another day, because what we're doing here is nowhere near Clifton. So I would say that the time to bring that to us is at the CIP, have the conversation as part of the CIP, and see what the full board wants to do about that school, or lack of a school. So, that's all I had.
At this point, could we please pull up the next steps for the board's review? Okay, Mr. Wilson, starting with you.
Yeah, and I think that maybe just to, I mean, somewhere we probably got program capacity data related to modular, maybe that's the second to last. I think it can be combined, frankly, that bullet and my bullet, since we should have that information together, right?
Microphone?
Yeah, my mic is on, I'm just not speaking into it, right? So I think my bullet and the bullet regarding program capacity, not including modular classrooms, I think they go together. I would like to see that information across time, but I should also, I would want to see as well, like, how much of that is, you know, due to modulators, and to see it together, those two bullets. So, I mean, be separate, but I think my bullet is fine, but I would say that it's connected to that fifth bullet as well.
Okay. We'll just leave it, it's fine. Really, this is just for Dr. Brabran and staff. I think if they get the language and understand the request, we don't have to housekeep it.
Ms. McLaughlin, just a process question. I think what staff is looking for is consensus that the scoping that they've provided to us is something that the board supports. So I think we do need to do that as part of this conversation.
We will make sure that we do that as, what I'd like to do is, in fairness, the board spent well over two hours, so if there's next steps from the dialogue, then let's capture it. It's not that many bullets, as I see here, and then we'll just make sure there's support.
All right.
So, Ms. Kies-Gamara, you have the next three?
I have reviewed all of them.
Okay.
Someone responded with respect to the census, they say that's already in there, I don't know, but...
Needs to be in there.
Okay, all right.
So I'll read this out. So, July work session provided, I know some board members can't read it, so I'm helping them, because they...
But we can read it. I can read it.
I, my colleague, who is my meeting manager, said she couldn't read it. I was gonna read it out for her, so, and also, so, it's, so, besides people who, the... The audience who's gonna watch this later is gonna wonder what we vote on. At the July work session, provide analysis of how revised military rules have impacted FCPS. Staff to provide information regarding how we will need to incorporate the census information into our work. And then staff to provide recommendations regarding how to address split feeders. Okay, all of that's clear to...
I would suggest on the military rules, it's at July work session, provide analysis of how FCPS implemented the Virginia military revisions to the military rules, because we implemented it different than others.
Can I ask on the census information, do you mean the redistricting that's gonna happen? Because I don't...
I'm really wondering how those new numbers will impact what we're doing with respect to how we set up our schools. How will we utilize that information? Does that make sense?
You mean the census in terms of projections, not in terms of redistricting?
Yeah, I mean, they can't redistrict. I'm just making sure that we include that information. Census data, I guess is more accurate.
Ms. Kies-Gamara, may I just ask a clarifying question about the analysis for military rules? Did you want to see just the military piece, or all the transfer policy pieces to...
Well, that's certainly helpful to, I mean, we've got some built-in changes, right, that create, that add to our student population. All of that needs to be, as we gear up for this larger conversation, that information will be critical.
Okay. Are you okay with the more expansive military rules in addition to the other?
I don't want any more information. No, it's like...
If you could just add military rules and the other...
Transfer?
And other pupil placement opportunities, through the student transfer policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran. I was just messing with you.
Okay, and then I had number five, which was provide program capacity data, not including modular classrooms. I'm looking to Mr. Plattenberg, I mean, I...
Well, in the CIP, you mean, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I...
So let's add in the CIP.
Again, I was just, I was throwing that out there as a suggestion. I would actually say that it's part of the consideration, that's gonna be something that Dr. Brabran and the staff can talk to us about, any revisions to the next CIP, whether...
Well, we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, it's fine, modular classrooms, temporary classrooms, but I would want, that was my suggestion, is to have staff look at it and say, can we get better at helping to more accurately capture what we're doing into those buildings and those campuses? But Ms. Evans, you wanted to add something.
Well, and I mean, I think we, I believe we've asked for this before, and we've received it, well, we've received it as a document, a separate document from the CIP before, and I think it's been very valuable, so I do think that it needs to be incorporated in the next CIP. So I don't think we need to consider it anymore. I think we just need to say we want to see it in the CIP.
Well, we actually had that as a follow-up to the last CIP discussion, so I'm sure that it will be, but I think it's not only just classrooms in the CIP, as well as boundary discussions. So that when we are looking at a boundary, and it may look like there's a lot of capacity in a building, because they happen to have an antiquated modular and five temporary trailers, you don't want, that sends a false message that there's capacity there.
And I think what we got was, I do think, if I recall correctly, in the CIP, we did get a number of modulators and a number of classrooms, but what we didn't get was the program capacity, without that included, and that's what we need to see.
All right, so I guess, Mr. Plattenberg, I would ask, is number five clear enough, or do you... Okay.
And what I'm hearing is that whenever we bring capacity to the board, that we certainly include what that capacity looks like without modulators and program, and just have that be the base set of information that we bring to the board moving forward, whether it be the CIP, boundary discussions, or anytime we do talk about capacity.
Excellent, okay. And then number six, Mr. Wilson, you said, you would, you're asking for a preliminary analysis of Clifton Elementary School facility. All right, so in terms of board support for, number one, Mr. Wilson's, on data regarding capacity for schools over time, there's support there, okay? Number two, support for Ms. Kies-Gamara?
Before we leave Mr. Wilson's, do you want to put a period of time that you want it to look at? Because over time, is it five years, 10 years?
I thought, I don't, you know, I think five years is a good starting point. If they have the data and it's easily accessible, I wouldn't mind seeing more.
Okay, we'll start with five years, okay?
So I do just want to ask Dr. Brabran, you know, since this conversation has started out as a, you know, a discrete boundary study, we seem to be revisiting the CIP here. So, I mean...
Well, actually, Ms. Evans, one... Well, actually, Ms. Evans, one thought, I look at this, is it was about today's proposals for the existing CIP that we just voted on, but Mr. Plattenberg is going to have to create the next CIP. And so, we ended up talking about, and I think that some board members ended up realizing when they were questioning Ms. Evans and me about Maps A and B, how did that get there and why? It kind of was a good work session for people to remember. It's going to happen, it's there, and vote then or don't vote. So, he's got to prepare the next CIP, and I think that this is to give him good guidance for the next CIP. So, with that in mind, Ms. Kies-Gamara has two, three, and four that are all pretty interrelated. Can I see hands of support? Okay. Number five, on getting that program capacity data, we're breaking that out, is there support for number five? Okay. And then number six, just requesting a preliminary analysis of the Clifton Elementary School facility, support to have staff do that analysis.
What are you looking for?
I think that when we have our next CIP conversation, we need to understand that facility.
I think when we have the July conversation, we need to be able to understand.
Yeah. And I would, and in addition to that, I think that although this is a fairly narrowly tailored conversation, it's been actually kind of far-ranging during the course of this meeting. So, I don't think it extends too far, but that, the most critical thing is, I think we need to have that information when we discuss the CIP next.
Well, that's correct, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Schultz mentioned something about July. It's my understanding, July is our macro-level policy question, about how we're going to do boundaries and what priorities we give direction to superintendent. The Clifton one certainly is needed information before Mr. Plattenberg starts to develop the next CIP, so Mr. Plattenberg...
Entire point is to have a suite of solutions, other than leveraging the hammer on communities of massive boundary studies. There's got to be other solutions, like program placements, you know, wise use of facilities. How are you going to get rid of trailers if we're not even using facilities and land we already have?
Just to clarify, the question that I had in the request with regards to Clifton wasn't intended to have a due date that was sort of an express due date, that we have to have this in advance when we're looking at the policy. I think the policy, as we revise it, is going to come to bear on Clifton, so we need that information. If a preliminary analysis can be given to us, I think that's a useful point of reference in our conversation.
And the school, and the existing policy references closing of schools. So, it will be a part of that policy discussion, and I think this body has made it evidently clear that it will need to be comprehensive and encompass what to do next. So, that'll be coming forward, and if I can get the information on the cost, I'll be happy to do that. I'd like to move on with this one, because I think I can get some estimated costs and pricing.
Okay, yeah, I think that, what I heard, just for clarity, I heard Mr. Wilson say, his request, number six, is that it's not about having it in time for July, it's as we prepare for the next CIP, which is reasonable, because we've got an unused building there, can we have support that, as he's going to prepare for the next CIP, that we're going to have an idea what's going to happen with that school facility?
But I would say that if it's available, and the facilities can provide it without too much burden, it would be great to have it.
Yes, Mr. Wilson, I think there seems to be still some, a little bit of disconnect about what board members understand is going to happen in July. July is only macro-level, looking at our existing boundary policy, and then what we're going to do, so the policy does not include specific targeted schools and what we're going to be attempting in the next CIP.
There will be no scoping in the July discussion, the whole...
I understand, but we will be discussing criteria, for example, for opening a school.
Right, but that's not a scope.
That's fine, that would still be going to specificity, and we won't be having specificity in July. But I'm certainly happy to support number six, that he'll do the analysis before the next CIP is developed. So, so, before the next CIP developed, which is what we talked about, can you raise your hand in support of that? Okay, I see support there. At this point, the only other thing, as Ms. Evans pointed out as my co-meeting manager, is can I see a show of hands in support of what staff brought us today, which is for Maps A and B, that this will be the boundary work that they're going, staff will continue to work on?
Aren't we, it's not A and B if we have revised Taking Little Run out, correct?
No, actually, I know this isn't your magisterial districts, and I know it's not your magisterial districts, hear me out, because I said it in the beginning. In order for Wakefield Forest to get built, it may not get built large enough to handle everyone who's going there. These schools, Old Creek and Little Run, and it should actually include Canterbury, and Canterbury had been up there, but Canterbury Woods, they all surround Wakefield Forest. We may have to have a domino effect of how we're doing attendance boundaries to alleviate the overcrowding at Wakefield Forest.
But what you have now up there is Little Run's not there. That's what my question...
Little Run, those schools, if, as you noticed, he said he collapsed it all into one thing, they're all part of a boundary study, because they're all going to be affected by Wakefield. Yeah.
That's fine. I just, when you started today, you said Little Run needed to be taken out.
Little Run is going to be in another project.
Okay, so, okay.
So, Little Run's still connected to this project. And I will ask staff to please correct that, because you forgot to put Canterbury Woods up there, because they're part of the Wakefield Forest project. Yep. I know, yep, but it's not in that final slide. Canterbury Woods, yep, and then we have Glen Forest. Is there support for those two as discussed today? Okay, Ms. Darren Kofax, are you voting now? Okay. One, two, all right, there's consensus with board members here, okay? This work session is adjourned, and now I'm turning it over to our chair, because I believe she has to have us do something next.
The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider disciplinary and other matters concerning one or more students to pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Hines. We are now enclosed.